So I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. And before we start with the formal agenda, I would ask Hatton to explain to those attending by Zoom, either on the phone or on a tablet or on a computer, the mechanism by which to raise your hand for public comment on either non-agenda items or agenda items. So Hatton, I'll turn my mic off for now.
Sure. Good evening and welcome. This is Hatton Lippman, the Communications Director. If you're joining on Zoom and you would like to make public comment, there are some controls right at the bottom of your screen. You just take your cursor down to the bottom of the black part of the screen, and you'll see a button that says Participants. When you click on that button, it will open a list of all the participants in the meeting. And at the bottom of that white window, you will see an icon for Raise Hand. That's how you'll do it if you're joining from the computer. If you're joining on the phone, you'll press star nine on your keypad. That will indicate your hand is raised and you'll be placed in line. When it's time to unmute yourself on the phone, you'll press star six. And those of you that are on the computer, if you need a quick reminder, the controls for turning on and off your microphone and your camera are just down on the bottom left-hand side of your screen. You'll see an icon that says Unmute and an icon that says Start or Stop Video. That's how you control what we see or hear from you tonight. Everyone will stay on mute unless they're making public comment. And the chat feature is turned off except for chatting the host, which is me, in case you have any technical difficulties. Chat will not be used for any sort of public comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Hatton. And so now I'll call the meeting to order. I'll welcome everyone who's participating on Zoom and those who are in person in the new boardroom. And I will take role. I believe I see that all trustees except Trustee Wake are here either on Zoom or in person. And I see that-
Trustee Wake is here.
Oh, good. I didn't see you. There you are. Thanks. And so we have all trustees present, and I believe we have all student trustees present except Claire and I think just Claire. All the other student trustees are also present.
We actually have all the student trustees now on the Zoom.
Oh, good. Thanks. I'm just, I forgot my computers. I'm trying to look at a really small screen and keep track of everyone, so apologies for that. So with that, we'll go ahead and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. And now we move to item number three on the agenda, which is to review, revise, and approve the agenda. Is there any request to revise the agenda in any fashion? I'm looking around the room, and I will, Hatton, if you can also check to see if any trustee's hands are up.
I don't see any indication on Zoom.
Okay. So with that, we'll go ahead and follow the agenda. So the next item, item number four, is to approve the minutes from the Board of Trustees' Regular Board Meeting from November 19th, 2020. Is there any request from any trustee to make any modifications to those minutes? I'm not seeing any in the room, and let me double-check. I'm not seeing any on Zoom, any hands raised on Zoom. So is there a motion to approve the minutes from the November 19th Board Meeting, moved by Trustee Old Person and seconded by Trustee Lorenzen? All those in favor of approving those minutes, please indicate by raising your hand or unmuting yourself and saying yes. And Hatton can look for hands raised virtually, too.
Trustee McDonald, Trustee Wake, Trustee Sturbis, and Trustee Decker have raised their hands.
Okay. Thank you so much for your help. And so we come to public comment now on non-agenda items. This is the time for any member of the public to make a comment that they would like to bring to the Board's attention on an item that isn't on our agenda tonight. We take public comment at the beginning and end of every meeting on non-agenda items. We ask that you identify yourself. If you have an unusual spelling of your name, please spell it for our minutes. And then please unmute yourself. Well, first raise your hand and then unmute yourself. And then we ask everyone to limit their public comment on both non-agenda and agenda items to three minutes. So with that being said, I'll, to some extent, rely on Hatton to identify those who have indicated they'd like to make public comment on a non-agenda item.
At this point, there are no hands raised live or via the handraise function.
Thanks. That's what it looked like to me as well. Okay, then we'll go on to item number six A, which are the Student Trustee Reports. And so I will just call on you in the order in which your names appear on my list. So Jaden, would you like to provide your Student Trustee Report from Big Sky?
Yeah, sure. So as she stated, my name's Jaden Bead, and I'm the Student Trustee from Big Sky. So just a general overview of what I'm going to be talking about in this review. The first is a brief overview of what's happening at Big Sky as a whole slash a little bit of leadership, and then move into our activities and athletics. So first for that overview, Big Sky's been really successful in facilitating a multitude of different community involvement opportunities while simultaneously following COVID protocols and procedures. I talked a lot about these at the past meetings, but since we've done a heck of a lot more. So one that is currently going on is from our Family Resource Center, where they are doing a Giving Tree to help Big Sky families through the holidays. If you would like to donate or contribute to this, you can head over to Big Sky's social media to get the link. Even though community involvement and outreach is really hard right now and more difficult than it ever has been, it's also a time of greatest need, and Big Sky is doing an amazing job of helping to fill that need. So now on to activities and athletics. Student Government is kicking off their Winter Spirit Week, which is this week. MUN has handwritten cards to residents of the village to let them know that we're thinking of them, and they received one back about how much it brightened their day. MUN students also did very well at their virtual conference. HOSA has sent Thanksgiving cards to the village, and they're offering mass grams, which anyone may fill out for free and will be delivered after the holiday break. They also posted to the HOSA Instagram with their members thanking healthcare workers. HOSA members will present virtual lessons on the human body to elementary school students as well, and they will be selling Missoula tea and spice tea for the holidays. Finally, the students are choosing their competitive events for the State Leadership Conference in March. Key Club is making pet toys and blankets to donate to animal meals and the Humane Society. They are also conducting a pet food drive and hosting a petting zoo at our Ag Center. But Speech and Debate is in full swing and is still encouraging members to join. Their team has competed at two tournaments, both of which were very successful, being the Billings Invite and the Callisbell Invite. At the Billings Tournament, we had students play second in LD Debate, third and eighth in Legislative Debate, first in DI, sixth in Informative, seventh in POI. And at the Callisbell Invite, we had students play first and sixth in Legislative Debate, second in HI, fourth in DI, and fifth in DUO. A few more also broke to elimination rounds in both of these tournaments but did not make the top eight. So we see that our Speech and Debate team is doing great this season despite COVID and all of the changes towards switching to online. BPA has elected their president and is currently tying blankets for the new Southside Homeless Shelter, which is set to open in 2021. They're also preparing for the regional competition, which has been, which has been set to be held virtually on January 27th. Winter sports have begun their season on December 7th with tryouts and a formulation of teams for girls' basketball, boys' basketball, and wrestling. Swimming is soon to begin, dependent on the hiring of enough staff members at the U M Grizz Pool to safely begin practices. Events are set to begin on January 2nd versus Butte, and our first wrestling duel will occur on January 5th. Lastly, just with a quick note, I would just like to express how proud I am to be an Eagle because of how much Big Sky is giving back to our community. We're going above and beyond to fill the needs that are currently of our community, not only at Big Sky but of Missoula as a whole. As I stated, BPA is trying to help a new homeless shelter get on their feet in order to help the homeless population of Missoula and much more. I just can't express how proud I am to be an Eagle when we're doing so much, especially in a time that needs it so much, but also is so hard at the same time. Anyway, that concludes my student report. Thank you.
Thanks, Jaden. And is it easy to find the link on the Big Sky website where, if anyone wants to make a donation?
Yeah, I believe it is on the website. However, I don't know specifically where. I believe that you would go to our FRC page on there. However, do you know for a fact that it's posted not only on Ms. Courtney's Instagram page, Big Sky Principal, as well as the MTSS Big Sky Instagram page? And I know for a fact that that link is posted on our Big Sky Facebook page, which would probably be the most easiest places to find them.
Great. Thank you very much. And then I believe we have both Malone and Daisy here to give a student report on Sentinel High School.
Right. Can everybody hear me?
I can.
Perfect. Okay, so, good evening. I hope everyone's doing well. Once again, I am Malone Ingram, and I'm here with my co-trustee Daisy to represent Sentinel. And today, we're pleased to present our final report of 2020. Sentinel is still going strong with the hybrid block schedule. Right now, we're in our second rotation of Block Number Two, where students focus on their periods three and four. And this is the last week of school before we head off for a much-needed winter break. Upon returning from break, students will enter Block Three, focusing on periods five and six. The end of this block will also wrap up first semester. In sports news, we want to recognize our football team for a huge win at the state tournament. This was Sentinel's first football state championship victory since 1972. Boys' and girls' basketball practice started up last week, with their first game against Flathead coming up on January 7th, 2021. Wrestling practice also began last week, and their first meet is at Big Sky on January 5th. So now I'll turn it over to Daisy to talk about our activities.
All right. So hi, I'm Daisy. Just for reiteration, and I'll continue on with this report. So in addition to our sports teams, Sentinel activities and clubs are busy as well. We see Speech and Debate kicked off their busy season with a tournament on December 4th and 5th, where they took fourth place statewide. They had another tournament on December 11th and 12th, where they placed fifth. And now we're gearing up for one more tournament before the break. In other news, Amnesty International is hosting an annual Right for Rights Conference this week at Sentinel. National Honor Society just wrapped up their Point Seta fundraiser and are now working on the Giving Tree fundraiser to support Sentinel families. Student Government has been busy as well with their Candygram fundraiser that took place last week. This week, Candygrams will be delivered to students before the upcoming holiday break. And additionally, student government has adopted a Sentinel family in need to help out during the holidays. We've, they've also adopted a senior citizen, senior citizen pen pals. And additionally, they're working on senior shirts for the class of 2021. Reporters from our newspaper, The Spartan Scoop, are busy working on a third edition that will come out within a week. So thank you so much for your time tonight, and Malone and I hope you have a great holiday season. Thank you.
Thanks for that report. And next, we'll have Claire and Eric from Sealy Swan High School.
Merry Christmas, everyone. I'm Eric Lorenz from Sealy Swan. I'll be reading the report with Claire Kovach. Well, as we push through the last months of 2020, we would like to share some of the happenings at Sealy Swan High School. First off, winter sports are in full swing. Basketball and ski are both preparing for competitions. We hope they stay on schedule because of COVID. First, the first basketball game is on January 2nd, and soon after that, the first ski race is on February 12th, or January 12th, my bad. Student Council is staying busy, bringing in holiday cheer with blood donation. Sounds kind of morbid, but this, this weekend, a couple of members also put up two Christmas trees in the school. The trees not only look great, but hopefully inspire the students to push through the last few days of, before Christmas break. Also, looking to bring a holiday feel to the school is Sealy Swan Leo's Club. They will be holding a hot chocolate social in each lunch area on Thursday, complete with marshmallows and candy canes.
Thanks, Eric. Also, on Thursday 17th, families of Sealy Lake will be provided with a meal, dessert, and a game package. The meal is being provided by Sealy Swan High School to promote family engagement. This was an attempt to secure Title I money, and the meal, along with an entry into Corey's Valley Market gift card drawing, was offered in return for free and reduced lunch forms. In all, the school will be giving dinner and a game to 11 families or 54 people total. And I am lucky enough to say that I am one of those families. The newest club at SSHS is BPA, and it is so exciting to have seven members, seven members in its first year that it's up and running for us. Just recently, six of the students signed up for the national, or the regional competitions that are starting in January that'll lead to the national competitions. And the business club is focused on teaching students business work and leadership skills. As students, I speak for Eric and I and the rest of us, we are thankful that we have been able to attend class in person. The three-hour classes can be grueling, but they have advantages for getting classwork done, that's for sure. We all want to wish you a great Christmas break, and we'll catch you at the start of the new year.
Thank you. And then we'll hear from Mariposa from Willard, and then Waverly from Hellgate. So Mariposa, go ahead.
Yes, hello. I am Mariposa. As you know, the end of the semester ends on the 18th, and at Willard, there will be 16 students graduating. This week is Pride Week, Day One being Decades Day, and Day Two, we will be expressing what we as individuals take pride in. These past few weeks, Willard has received multiple generous, generous, excuse me, donations from our community. Because of this, the school will be fortunate enough to be able to help provide for the students and their families in need of support this holiday season. Thank you, and happy holidays.
Thanks, Mariposa. And Waverly, want to give us your report on what's going on at Hellgate?
Hello and good evening. I'm Waverly Winter, and I'm Hellgate Student Trustee. We're halfway through the quarter, through the second quarter, and after this week, we're going to be going off to our winter break. When we come back from winter break, we will have three more weeks left in the first semester, and then we will start our second semester. The second semester will change to three periods in the day instead of two. And now seniors are starting to get back responses from colleges and universities. Now going on to clubs and activities. The basketball season has started, and teams have been chosen. And, but the first basketball games won't be until the beginning of January. Swim season still has not started, but hopefully will soon, and the university pool is looking for more staff members to be able to have swim practices safely. The wrestling team has started practicing as well, but they will not have the first wrestling matches until the beginning of January. Students and staff are hoping to be able to watch basketball games, swim meets, and wrestling matches in this coming new year. Students and National Honor Society, NHS, is working on a holiday concert that would be held on Tuesday, December 22nd at 7:00 p.m. And all proceeds from the holiday concert will be going to the Missoula Food Bank. Speech and Debate have had their first meets over the last few weekends, and Stu Government is finishing up on a canned food drive that is going on throughout this week, and all the proceeds will be donated to the Missoula Food Bank. They're also donating two Christmas trees to the, to two Hellgate families. And Stu Government is also organizing a scavenger hunt, selling hot cocoa during lunch, and having an ugly Christmas sweater day this week. Save, BPA, Key Club, HOSA, Robotics and Flagship are busy working on new projects and activities. Some clubs are still not started, and some are on pause due to COVID-19 restrictions. Hellgate teachers are doing a great job adapting to COVID-19 restrictions and hoping and supporting their students. The Hellgate staff are doing a fabulous job with making Hellgate's environment welcoming and cheery. This school is very, this school year is very different than past years, but the Hellgate community is keeping a positive attitude and making the best out of everything that has been thrown on us. We're especially grateful to the amazing Hellgate staff this year. Thank you, and have a wonderful evening and happy holidays.
And thanks to all student trustees for your reports. And I'm sure on behalf of the Board and the administration, we also wish you happy holidays. And I'm sure you're all looking forward to a break from school. So enjoy yourselves over the break. And with that, we'll turn to six B, which is the Health Insurance Trust Fund Report, which is found on page 19 in the packet. We see this as a routine report for the month, every month. And this is so, this report is for the month of November. And then we move on to six C, which is announcements from Dr. Watson.
Okay. Thanks, trustees. Hopefully you can hear me all right. I have just a couple of announcements. Actually, I do like to go after the student reports because they end up taking quite a few of my announcements, which is great. One of the things I was going to talk about was second semester schedules at the high school, but that was already mentioned. We are transitioning a little bit in terms of the number of periods per day at the high schools, and so we announced that last Friday. But remember, second semester doesn't start until January 25th. We are coming up on our winter break, starting this Friday and extending through January 4th when we'll be back. The other thing I just wanted to mention is our, our next board meeting is the 12th of January. And the final thing I'll remember, I'll mention, I don't know if it was mentioned this evening in the student reports, I didn't hear it, but the other thing that we need some help with is volunteers for judging for Speech and Debate. So Speech and Debate is happening, but it's happening virtually. The meets are all virtual. And so as a judge, you can actually judge from home using your computer. And there is a meet coming up this weekend. So if we have any trustees that are interested in judging, just let me know, and I can forward that, that information to you. Those are all my announcements. Thank you.
Thank you. And then we'll move on to seven, which is the Consent Agenda. There are two items on it. One is an elementary-only item, which is A2. So we'll talk about them in terms of why they're on the consent agenda first, and then we'll take two separate motions. The reason items are placed on the consent agenda is because they're routine perfunctory items that we see virtually every month, or at least on a regular basis. If any trustee would want to discuss any item on the consent agenda, it's simply a request to do so at the meeting or even earlier. And so I haven't had any requests for these two items, and we do see these two on a fairly regular basis. Being placed on the consent agenda means that trustees will not discuss the items, but we do take public comment. And so with that is there a motion to approve the Revenue and Expenditure Report found on page 20, moved by trustee Aguirre, and seconded by trustee Lorenzen. As I indicated, we won't take any board comment or have board discussion. Is there any public comment? I'm not seeing any hands up, Hatton. So all those in favor of approving, of the motion to approve the Revenue and Expenditure Reports, please trustees, raise your hand or say yes if you're participating via Zoom. And so it is unanimous as to trustees present in the boardroom.
Trustee McDonald, trustee Sturbis, trustee Decker have all raised their hands.
Okay, thank you. So the motion passes unanimously. And then we move on to A2, which, as I indicated, it is acknowledging MCPS students attending other schools. And so in this particular instance, the requests all came in at the elementary level, K through eight. So is there a motion from a K-12 trustee to acknowledge the attached list of elementary students requesting to attend other school districts? Moved by trustee Lorenzen and seconded by trustee Hobins. And as I indicated again, there won't be any board discussion. Is there any public comment? Not seeing any, and Hatton's not seeing any either. So all K-12 trustees in favor of the motion to acknowledge the attached list of elementary students requesting to attend other school districts, please indicate by raising your hand.
Trustee McDonald and trustee Decker have raised their hands.
Thanks. And so that motion also passes unanimously. And then we move on to eight A1, under Teaching and Learning, which is the approval of a K-12 feasibility plan to increase in-person support for students defined in special populations and/or K2 students. And so Dr. Watson, I believe there's a fairly lengthy background included in the agenda. And I think this was based on a request from either trustee Aguirre or trustee Mercer at the last board meeting to come up with a feasibility study. We had mentioned that it would be presented at the December 6th board meeting, but we're meeting today instead in order to get a little bit more information available before we took up this matter. So with that, Dr. Watson, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay. Thank you, Chair Holland. And I just want to reference in the, in the agenda item, I did talk about giving the board a few other updates in addition to this feasibility study. And so one of the things I wanted to do is just give the board a general COVID update. And so I'm going to share my screen here. Hopefully this will, will work. It's gonna be a second. I know that's very hard to see if you're in the boardroom. Hopefully those that are on Zoom can see it at home, but I'll, I'll talk you through it. It's the data dashboard that we've looked at before in previous meetings. Remember, this is available on our website and updated at the end of each week. So this is as of last Friday. The first two indicators are indicators from the community. These are not district indicators, but one thing that we've been looking at is the incident rate. That's the number of new cases per 100,000 residents, seven-day average. As of last Friday, it was 61. That has come down quite a bit in the last, I would say in the last three weeks. I think three weeks ago, it was over 70. So that, that's, that's improving. But the reason that status is still red is because if you, if you go back to the top of this, we look at the CDC and the Harvard Health Institute guidance on this, and they, they would recommend that number be lower than 25. So we're heading in the right direction, but still red in terms of that one. Test positivity, same thing there. We are seeing better test positivity than we saw several weeks ago. As of Friday, actually as of Thursday, it was 12.68%. Again, test positivity, using the, the data, using the research that we've looked at, test positivity should be lower than 10%. So that's why that one is still red. Regarding the secondary indicators that we are using as a school district, so remember, the first two indicators I talked to you about are countywide. Those are numbers reported from the county. Those are not necessarily just school numbers, although our positive cases are included in those. But when we look at secondary indicators, these are district indicators that we've looked at for our school district. So the first one is we look at the number of active cases, and is that increasing or decreasing? And, and what, what's the relationship between the active cases in our district compared with the active cases in the county per 10,000? So last week, we had 10, at the end of last week, we had 10 active cases in our district, and there was 59 active cases per 10,000 in the county. So we're still doing much better in our district than in the county. And we use the number 10,000 because it's pretty close to the same number of folks we have in our district. The route of transmission, we are doing all of our own contact tracing at this point. And so one of the things we look at is when we, when we investigate a positive case, we ask the person where the transmission occurred, and we keep track of that every week. At the end of last week, 76% of the new cases confirmed transmission outside of school. That's better than it was a few weeks ago in terms of the confirmation of outside of school. Staffing still seems to be a struggle for us, although we are getting a little bit better. We've had fewer staff out this last week, which really helped. But we did have a couple of schools that were over 10% of staff out, both Lowell and Russell. And then we had a program closure at one of our elementary schools and some classrooms on remote learning at, at the high school, Sentinel High School, due to staff members that were out. So that one still gets sort of an orange color. It is improving, but we still have a number of staff out due to close contacts or confirmed cases. And then our contact tracing remains really good. We have all of our nurses now trained to be contact tracers, and so we're able to do that contact tracing within 24 hours of when we find out about the case. So I think that's encouraging. And the last one is just the mitigation strategies. I'm going to talk more about those tonight, so I'll pause on that. We'll go through that one right now. The other updates I wanted to give the board before we dive into the feasibility study, we, we also began rapid testing, so- we also began rapid testing, so we received some testing capabilities from the state of Montana. We received enough rapid testing that we could start testing our staff. These tests work if a staff member is showing symptoms. And we've been doing the rapid tests now for approximately, I would say, three or four weeks. Last week, we gave 23 tests to staff members, and we had one positive. That was a big improvement as well. Over the course of the few weeks that we've been doing this, we've given 45 tests total, and we've had seven positives. So, these rapid tests really have helped us determine which staff might be positive and actually helped us, you know, maintain that staff so that if they needed to leave, you know, or if they needed to stay at home, they could do so. So, the rapid testing is something that's new for us, but we really believe it's working very well. The other update that I wanted to give the board was an update on the Missoula Online Academy. We call it the MOA, and that's the program that we set up at the start of the year for any student that wanted a different option other than an in-person learning. And if you'll recall, we had about 1,700 students in that program. We have done an open enrollment process for any students that wanted to transfer at semester, if they wanted to transfer back into in-person, or if they want to transfer into the MOA. And so, just wanted to report on that. As of what we know from last week, about 200 students have said that they would like to transfer back to their home school and into in-person learning. And then we had about 100 students that were doing in-person learning this semester, and they would like to transfer into the MOA. So, the numbers are fairly close when you consider, you're talking about 1,700 students. I mean, we do have students that want to leave and some students that want to come in, so that's just an update on the MOA. The other thing I want to show you that we started at the last meeting, and I did mention in the agenda this evening that we would talk briefly about some achievement data. So, last meeting, we talked about a test called iReady, which is an assessment that's given to students grades K through five. iReady is a math assessment. This evening, I want to talk about a couple of reading assessments, and I know these graphs are very hard to see, so I will talk through these just so you understand what you're looking at. The first one I want to show you is an early literacy assessment that's given to our kindergarten students and our first graders. This assessment was given in the fall, so please understand it's when the students came back to school. It says nothing about what we're doing currently. The reason I wanted to show it to you is just so you have an understanding, because this evening, we're going to talk about some differences between our Title I schools and our non-Title schools. You can see it best in these green bars. So, the graph on the left is the Title I schools, and the green bar would tell you the percentage of students that showed up in the fall being at or above benchmark. So, for our Title I schools, that was in the neighborhood of 47 or 48%. In our non-Title schools, those numbers were higher. Last fall, it was 69%. This fall, 58%. So, again, this is an assessment given just to kindergarten and first grade. The other one I wanted to show you that we didn't talk about last week was another reading assessment. And again, I know these numbers are really hard to read, but what I want you to focus on, on this graph, is the area in red. So, this is an assessment that's also given at the start of the school year. It's a reading-only assessment. What you're looking at here is all K5 students that took the assessment, including students in the online academy. What the red would show you would be percentage of students that are in that, what ERLA calls the emergency area, which would be any student that's two or more years below grade level. So, in our Title schools, that red bar is 40%, and again, these are from the fall. So, keep in mind, this is when students came back to school. This is a pre-assessment, so that means that you're going to see some higher percentages here as the year goes along, then obviously those percentages will get better. But in our Title schools, 40%, non-Title schools, 28%, and 17% for students in the online academy. That's all grades K through five. Because this evening, we're going to talk about K1, two, I also wanted to show you some data from K1, two. So, this next slide is specific to kindergarten, same assessment. And again, we're looking at the red bar, which is percentage of students below grade level. 38% in our Title schools, 28% in non-Title, 18% in the online academy. So, that's kindergarten. First grade, the numbers are larger, 66% in our Title schools, 46% in our non-Title schools. And then second grade, again, 54% and 45%. The reason I wanted to show you these is what I noticed is by third grade, the percentages get a little bit better. But again, this is an assessment that's given in the fall, and I wanted to focus specifically on K1, two, because that's a discussion that we were going to have this evening. So, thought it was important to show you some of that assessment data that we do know. Keep in mind, we will continue to give these assessments all year long. And so, in late January, I should be able to show you some data on how students did this fall compared to how they did last fall, which will be important, I know, for the board's consideration. Let's see. So, the next thing I want to present is the feasibility study that we worked on over the last few weeks. What we've done is I've asked our elementary principals to take a look at the two things that the board asked about. So, the number one thing that they looked at is their K1, two population. And so, I'm going to show you some data related to K1, two, and what that feasibility looks like. The second thing I want to talk about is the group called, that we're calling special populations and how we define that. So, we'll go through that just a little bit. Let me back up for just a second, though, and kind of explain why this, why we're looking at those two groups. Please keep in mind that we are in the hybrid model, at least until the end of first semester. And if the numbers in terms of our community transmission don't improve, we may still be in the hybrid model starting second semester. And so, knowing that, I think what I gathered from the previous board discussion is that the board wanted to have a discussion about if we are in the hybrid model, is there anything else we could do to support what we know to be perhaps our most needy students, which would be students in that special population group, and/or support our youngest students, which would be in that K1, two group? So, I think that was really the request that came from the board. At least, that's how I interpreted the request at the last meeting, knowing that we're in the hybrid model. Is there anything else we could do for those two groups? So, that's how we approached this feasibility study. And for the board members that are in the room, I've left a sheet on your table that talks through the feasibility study. It's a two-sided sheet. If you look at the circle at the top, I circled special populations on one side, and the other side is K1, two. That's the sheet we're going to be working off of. I'm going to share it on my screen, but I know it's hard, difficult to see in this room, but those at home will be able to see it. In addition, I have a link to it that I can post, or at least I could ask Hatton to post, maybe in the chat, so let me get that done. Just give me a few seconds. As I'm doing this, I do want to remind the board that this is a feasibility study. It's not a final document. It's just, we just did a quick feasibility check to see what we could find out about K1, two and our special populations. I wouldn't want the board nor the community to think that we've finalized any of these plans, because nothing's been finalized. I think the whole notion of a feasibility study is to just consider what we could do based on what we know in terms of numbers. So, I posted a link to this document in the chat. I hope that folks can see that, and you can pull it up on your own if you'd like to dive deeper into this. I'm going to also share this on the screen as I talk through it. And the first group that we're going to look at is the special populations group. And so, if you're looking at this online, there should be two tabs at the top of the document. One says K5, the other one says special pop or special populations. We're going to be focusing on the special populations tab at this point. And what you'll see on the left-hand side is a list of schools. I removed the school names just because I thought that was probably the safest thing to do as we're talking about special populations and the need just to protect student privacy rights. So, I removed the school names. However, I did categorize the schools. The first four schools are Title I, so school A, B, C, and D, those are our Title I schools. And then the next five schools below that are our non-Title schools. And so, in the first column is the school. The second column is the number of students and/or the percentage of students that they identified as being in a special population. I'm going to pause here for a minute, and I'm going to allow Amy Shadak, our federal programs director, to just chat briefly with you about how we define special populations. And I'm going to stop sharing just so we could see Amy, maybe if she wants to unmute and chat.
Yep, I'm here.
Thanks, Amy. We can see you and hear you.
Okay, great. Thank you, Dr. Watson. So, what we asked our elementary principals to quickly pull together some school-wide data to determine our most at-risk students for each school. We used a tool that was similar to one we created for determining what populations or groups of students would benefit from the summer ramp-up program, if you remember that. We tweaked this tool a little bit. So, we took a look at academic data using our STAR, reading and math, or early literacy. We also used our ERLA, which stands for individual reading level assessment, those levels. We looked at iReady Math, which is new to us this fall. But we also took a look at participation in remote learning. We looked at home and food security. We looked at the, sorry, English language learning status and social emotional needs. How we reported this is that we used a four-point indicator scale. So, a one score would be red or urgent, a two would be a yellow or high risk, three would be a blue, which means medium risk, a four would be a green or low risk. Now, granted, a few of these categories can be subjective, so we used a decision-making rubric for what constitutes a four, three, two, or one in those more subjective areas. The percentages that are on that left-side column are, they represent the percentage of students whose totals that fall in that urgent and high levels for each student, or for each school, I apologize. This also gives us a really good opportunity to look at all students and all special groups and have it in one place. We asked our principals to do this, and there's a short-term turnaround, and so I just wanted to give a shout-out to all of our principals, and I appreciate their time and effort in pulling this together. But this will be a great tool for us to use to show information for you guys.
So, thanks, Amy. I think, again, just reminding the trustees why we did this. The request was a feasibility plan or a feasibility study around any extra supports we could give our special populations groups. In order to do that, it was important for me to determine approximately how many students are we talking about that fit in that special populations category? And what Amy just described is a process that the principals went through to determine the percentage of students. So, what you can see in this next column here, under special populations, is the percentage at each school that fit in that special populations group. And then, after they did that, the principals did some brainstorming and thought about if there was a way to support the special population students in a different way, what would that be? So, under that column that says plan and schedule, you can see some of the ideas that they've come up with. Extended the school day, after-schools are Mondays, bringing students back four days, adding a half-day on Monday. There's lots of different plans there. And then, once they developed the plan, we asked them, what additional supports would you need to implement the plan? And so, that's that changes and support column. The, let's see, the fourth column is mitigation. So, we've talked a lot about basic mitigation strategies. We talked about hand washing, use of masks, social distancing, contact tracing. Those are some key mitigation strategies. But the CDC actually has 17 different mitigation strategies for schools. I posted a link on that document if you want to look at all 17. But what we asked is, we asked our principals to assess if they were to implement one of these plans, which mitigation strategies would they have to problem-solve around? So, obviously, when you talk about bringing more students back, social distancing is a mitigation strategy that we're going to have to do some problem-solving around in order to make that happen. But it's only one of 17. The CDC encourages us to layer the mitigation strategies. That means don't rely on just one strategy. We're doing that in this room this evening. We're not relying just on masks. We're also using social distancing. And what CDC recommends is that you layer the mitigation strategies so you're not relying just on one. And remember, there's 17 different mitigation strategies. I would like to just show my appreciation for our teachers and our principals, because as you look across that list of 17 strategies, we're doing a really good job in terms of the types of strategies we're using in our district. And so, really appreciate all the hard work that's gone into that this fall, because we are doing a good job on a number of those strategies. Remember that nobody's going to be 100% on all 17 strategies, and the CDC knows that. What they're recommending is, again, that you layer those and use as many as you can to improve, or I'm sorry, to lower the risk and improve the likelihood that there won't be transmission in your schools. So, I'm going to stop there, because that was the special populations tab, and I know there's a lot of information there. You can see the percentages by school. You can see some of the plans that the schools have. If we were to bring back special populations, what that might look like. You can see that it's going to require some additional planning. Some of these say we would have to do something different with the buses, and so that's going to require some planning. So, none of this stuff can happen overnight. It's going to require additional planning at the school level. The other one I want to just briefly touch on, because most of it's, most of the chart is the same, so it doesn't require as much explanation. But the other tab that we provided to you, and for the board members in the room, it's on the reverse side of that document. The other feasibility plan that we looked at is if we were to bring back all students K1 and 2, and what that would look like. And so, in the first column, you'll actually see the numbers. So, I asked the principals to go section by section and determine how many kids they had in each section, and then we got an average class size. So, you'll notice, like, for example, in school A, even though all of their sections have 18 or less at school A, the average class size is 16.8 students. So, if we were to bring back all K1, two students, that's what you could expect in most classes, although some of the sections are approaching 18. And then, as you go down the list, you can see in some of our larger schools, we have sections that are 19 or over. By state standards, you won't see any sections more than 20 in general terms. We may have a few across the district, but for K1, two, 20 is the maximum. But we have less than that in a variety of different schools. So, for example, at school F with 11 sections, we have class sizes average of 15.4. However, all the first-grade classes are at 18, so that's a larger number than you'll see in other sections. I think what's interesting about this is you can see the differences school by school. You can see that it's not a one-size-fits-all problem to solve or a solution that will fit every single school. We're going to have to go school by school and determine what the best solution is. In some schools, it would require additional staff in order to reduce the numbers in those sections. And then, in some schools, it's going to require other things. So, I do want you to understand that as you look across this one, the commonality in almost every building was they were considering, what would it look like if we brought those students back grades K1, two for four days per week? if we brought those students back grades K1, 2 for four days per week? What would we have to do, what would we have to change? What mitigation strategies would we have to work on? So you can see those as well in that fourth column, the mitigation strategies to problem-solve around, and then just some other considerations. I think this is a good estimate of what it would take. I think you'll see in several of these, it would require additional staff. It would require some changing of their schedule, and it would require some problem-solving around the mitigation strategies. Having said that, I do want to note that the, the section numbers in our Title I schools are definitely lower in terms overall across the district. And so that's encouraging. We have, you know, we have sections at 15 or lower in quite a few of our Title I schools. If we were to prioritize our efforts or prioritize our limited amount of staffing, one recommendation I would make would be to prioritize that staffing at the Title I schools. So I'm going to stop there, I've given you a lot of information. I hope that this feasibility study is what you were expecting in terms of what, some of the questions you had regarding this issue. The other thing that I'll just point out is that what I believe the next steps are is to get guidance from you all to determine if we're on the right track, number one, but also just any other suggestions you have for us. And really, the next step is that we have to do some deep-dive planning when we come back from break to really start picking this apart and deciding what's going to work and what's not going to work, especially if we're looking at any one of these plans being implemented in the future. There is no deadline to implement one of these plans. I think that's the other piece I wanted to tell you, is that we would never implement one of these plans unless we could ensure that it's, you know, it's a safe plan and that we've got adequate staffing. But we're not going to, we're not going to know that until we start diving into this and really working through that planning process. I've asked the elementary principals to join us on Zoom this evening in case she had any questions regarding how they arrived at their special populations or how they arrived at some of their plans. Again, I'm not divulging the names of the schools on this sheet, but if you have questions about, in general terms, about Title I schools, I know our Title I principals would be able to answer that, or vice versa for our non-Titel schools. So I'm going to stop there. I guess what I'd hope from the board this evening is some guidance going forward for us as we start this planning process.
So can I ask one clarifying question, just so? On the special population side of the handout, some of the schools are identified as students grades K5, and others aren't identified. But I'm betting it's the same group, K5, for all of them?
Yes.
Even though that term is only used with about half of them?
Yep, and I can update that, that was my fault in that. But yes, all of the special populations, I asked the principals to look K5, not just K2, for special populations.
I figured as much, I just wanted to make sure. So trustee Hobbins has a question, and then Hatton, if you can help me know if someone online has a question? Go ahead.
Thanks. Dr. Watson, first of all, thanks so much for this information and all the principals for putting it together. It's so helpful to be able to break it down like this in terms of need. I'm just wondering quickly, what were the principals looking at just students who are in the hybrid program right now and not students that are enrolled in MOA?
Yes, all of the numbers you see on both of those sheets are the in-person students. Now, we do know which students are going to come back second semester, so I think some of those numbers went into their planning process.
Okay, quick follow-up, and then I, I do understand that there's, there's a certain population that has not been enrolled in MOA but is just doing homeschool too, and has kind of dropped out of the system. And should we be considering those numbers too as we're looking at improving what we're offering?
Yeah, it's a great question. I think that that would depend on if we assume that those students are going to re-enroll in our school district. We don't know that to be true, but it could happen. And if that does happen, it could change our, our planning process. I don't anticipate a lot of those students re-enrolling, but you just never know.
Trustee Mercer, and then I'll check with Hatton if anyone else has a question or comment for Dr. Watson.
So maybe three quick questions. One, are, does a special population, there are some kids in IEPs and stuff that are already there four days a week, right? Are they counted already, or are they in these numbers? Two, are these suggestions, these planning ideas, are those just the, the idea that that principal came up with? Is it taken then as a rejection of the other ideas? Like, if they don't put four days a week, does that mean they thought about it and rejected it? Or is this just the one they came up with as their primary idea? And then, big question, are these exclusive, or are these competing for resources?
Yeah, great question. Let's, if you don't mind, let's answer the IEP and the 504 question first. And Amy, can you help us out a little bit with that, with that special populations rubric? I don't believe IEP or 504 was on there, but the kids are going to be included in, I mean, they're part of the school population, am I correct?
Correct, it was school-wide data, but we did not have a category for IEP or 504.
But those students are part of the mix of the overall equation, if you will?
Yes, yes.
So if they, you know, if they come up with some of those red flags in a high-risk category, they're going to be part of those numbers?
Exactly, yep.
And I guess I'm asking, but some of those we might already be providing. So this number might be a little bigger if five or 10 are already there?
Yes, some of the special education students are already there four days a week, you're correct. And I already forgot your other two questions.
Are the suggestions or rejections of alternatives, and then are the K12, or K2 and the specials competing?
Great question. So what I asked, knowing, first of all, once they filled out that first column, knowing what numbers we're talking about, the second column, I really asked them to just put their best idea forward. So that, that's what you see there, just what they think is the best idea. Now, again, they're going to have to work through that with their staff because they didn't, didn't, we didn't have a chance or time to really talk through that with our staff. And then the last, the last question is a great question. These are not necessarily competing. In fact, some of the principals said, you know, I, here's my plan for K1, 2, but then regarding special populations, I still want to do something else for my three, four, or five kids in, in, in my special populations. And you'll see that in some of the notes. So they're not exclusive. They may be competing for the same staffing resources, in which case, you know, the, whatever plan goes forward with four days a week would probably be, get the priority for staffing.
Trustee Lorenzen, and then I'll check with Hatton to see if anyone online has a hand up?
At this point, I don't see any hands up from trustee someone.
Okay, so trustee Lorenzen?
Trustee Decker.
I just want to say thank you to everybody. I'm so impressed that you just asked an open-ended question and took open-ended answers. I don't see any attempt here to, to steer people. I feel like everybody was heard, and it makes me feel really positive, also in awe that we have to make this decision. I know Title, Title I indicates additional funding from federal. And my question is, would the Title I schools have even more money, or is it already spoken for, to do this with?
Yeah, so Amy, I don't know if you want to help me with this one, but the Title I budgets are set each year. And generally, a vast majority of that budget is spent on staff, am I correct? And those staff have already been part of the mix all year long. So it's, in some cases, I know we're still looking for some Title I staff, but in general, the majority of Title I staff are already in the system and already part of the solution. Is that safe to say?
Yep, that's exactly right.
And you indicated trustee Decker had a question?
Yes.
Okay, trustee Decker, go ahead.
Thanks. I'll add my kudos to the team for getting all of this thinking on paper or on the screen as quickly as you were able. It's really a lot to be sort of processing, so many thanks. I have kind of two questions. The first is that I maybe a little bit need some clarification, and I bet there may be other people in the community who would be wondering why any of these plans would require more staffing? When we are staffed in the, it would seem maybe that we're staffed in the buildings for the number of children who are attending in the buildings, and we would have been planning back in September to be moving to all those children in the buildings within a few weeks. And so what, what would be the ration, the reason now that we would need to be adding more staff in order to support those kids being in the building? So that's kind of one just technical question. The second is maybe more of a open-ended question, which is, what are the things that the board should be thinking about and maybe concerned about with having a school-by-school plan instead of a plan that maps across the whole district in the same way? And is that even something that we want to be considering?
Yes, the staffing question, I think when you start taking a look at the details of some of those plans, you'll start to see where some staff might be needed. So under the special population plans, there's discussions about using Mondays in a different way, perhaps bringing kids in on Mondays for intensive services, which could require additional staffing. The other one that you'll see is, on a couple of the plans, they talk about bringing students in, even though if they're in a special population, bringing them in on their remote days and not having them at home. Now granted, they could go into their classroom, but remember what teachers are doing. They're basically repeating what they did the first two days on the second two days. So you'll probably need some additional staff there to support those kids. Maybe they get pulled out and, and do an intensive program somewhere else in the building, so that would require additional staffing. The, when you take a look at the K1, 2 plans, the, the reason that you'll see requests for additional staffing, a couple of things. Number one, you know, what, what is the magic number in terms of what's the maximum for a K1, 2 classroom to still manage most of those mitigation strategies? Realizing that social distancing is one of those strategies, very difficult, you know, with any group of K1, 2. It's much easier with, you know, 10 students or seven students. Gets much more difficult with 14 or 15 students. And so the question is, at what point do we decide that social distancing is, is not going to work, and what we have to do is hire an additional teacher to lower the class sizes in every section in order to get kids back four days a week? So that's, that's some of the discussions and decisions the principals were looking at. We set a number of 15, and if, in order to get to 15 in some of our schools, it would require additional teachers at those grade levels to get to 15. The other staffing thing that you'll see there is as, as you add more sections to your schedule, that means that you may need more specialists. So right now, our specialists are helping support our cohorts. A specialist might be a music teacher or an art teacher, librarian. But as you add more sections to your school, you might need more specialist times to help support those additional sections. So those are just some examples of staffing. The, the second question is a great question. And, and again, the reason I have encouraged the board to consider this as a school-by-school plan is, is quite frankly, because every school is slightly different in terms of environment, in terms of what's available in the school, as far as spaces that could be used, you know, libraries or gymnasiums or cafeterias. Every school has a slightly different environment. Every school has some additional staffing or not enough staffing in certain areas. So it, at some level, it's going to have to be a school plan where a school principal sits down with their staff and works out the, the fine details of the plan. I think what the board could do and what the district could do is set some general parameters. And if one of the parameters is we figure out a way to get more in-person time for some of our most neediest kids, that's a parameter. And then you could set a parameter on which days of the week we should do that, or how many kids we should have back at any one time. But I think the district could set some parameters. But I really do believe, because our schools are so different in terms of population and school environment, that it will have to be a school-by-school plan on how to fulfill those parameters.
Dr. Watson, I think your comment really, I have a comment and a question. Talking about the, how each school is different, and I think our schools are awesome. I really do think our principals and teachers do a great job. But I think that highlights the need of equity across the board, especially in our K12 for our special populations. But my question is, I want to hear from some of the principals in seeing how they came up with their plan, and if they, how, who they spoke to, did they talk to their teachers? Or was it just something they came up on their own? I want to know how they came up with that, their individual plan.
Yeah, so I think the principals can speak this evening, I won't speak for them. But I will tell you, we didn't give them a lot of time, and we knew that this was an important discussion this evening. And so we gave them some general parameters on figuring out their special populations and talking about their plans. But really, what you see here, and I want to be really crystal-clear about this, what you see here is just a, it's just a draft. It's not a final plan. If we decide to move a certain direction, we know there's going to be lots more discussions with principals and teachers in order to, to implement something. So what you see here is simply a draft. Some of the principals spoke to their, what they call their guiding coalition or their teacher leaders. Other principals, quite frankly, we didn't give them enough time to do that, so they had to pull some of this together on their own. But it's a pretty good first draft, I'll just say that, but it is a draft. So any, any principals on the line that would just like to talk through how they came up with some of their plans?
Hi, Rob, this is Barbara from Lowell. I'm happy to speak to my plan. I shared it with the COVID task force as well this week and was happy to have that opportunity. I had the chance, just by luck of the draw, that I was having a guiding coalition meeting, which is my team of teacher leaders. And we were able to walk through the plan, and I got their feedback for our school. So that's one thing that was really nice, is that they were able to provide exact feedback for both special populations as well as what it would look like to bring all of the kiddos back to school.
Hi, Rob, I'm happy to speak too. This is Julie Robitaille, principal at Paxton Elementary. And I was lucky enough, like Barbara, to have a staff meeting scheduled for last Wednesday, and we received the template on Tuesday. So I just went over the general information and asked for general feedback. I asked my counselor and FRC and secretary and coach to fill out as many of the data columns as we could, and then had the teachers weigh in and score the one column of remote learning participation, and then tallied from there. But we also did discuss it at our Monday staff meeting, just yesterday, I guess that was. So they got to see the entire template and all the data in it, and contributed to the conversation of, you know, what advantages would be, what drawbacks would be, concerns they had, et cetera.
Hi, everybody, this is Becky Sorensen, I'm the principal at Hawthorne. At our school, we gathered the data together, teachers helped gather the data. We have not talked about exactly what we would do to plan, but I will tell you that every day I am asked by a teacher, especially in the early grades, can I bring this student back? This student needs more days. And so with our small sections, our very small classes in K1, 2, I am confident that we could make a plan, but at Hawthorne, we do things together, and we would definitely make that plan together.
I am Peter Halloran, I'm the principal at Russell. Like several, several of the other principals, we gathered some of the academic data from different members of the team, and then reached out to teachers since they know the kids and their life situations and home situations the best, and got, got them to help with that process. We have not had the chance to sit down and problem-solve. I think in hopes of waiting for some parameters to do that. But I would be, you know, thrilled and excited to be able to sit down with my team and say, here's what we know. Let's figure out something that works for our school and for our population.
I didn't know if any other principals wanted to make any comments.
I'm Christina Stevens, and I'm the principal at Jeanette Rankin Elementary. And I, I met with my special ed staff and my FRC so that we could look at the data. And then I met with each of the teams together with the teachers and went over the data with them in case there were teachers or students I missed. One of the things is, we work through this process, because we're one of, we're the largest school in, in Missoula. So as we look at our data and we start to add some of these students into the building, we could see that it is almost easier to go K2 than to just add it in our population. we could see that it is almost easier to go K-2 than to just add it in our populations of kids that are in need, just because our numbers don't change that much. When you're in a school as big as I am, it's really easy to get to 15, 16 per classroom pretty quickly. So, we're in a different ballgame. I mean, you heard a lot from some of the schools about them being small and that they could absorb those kids. But our staff feels the same way, they, they would like to see kids back in school, especially at K-2. But we have to deal with some different issues, and one of those is the numbers. But we have been eating in the lunchroom, I want everyone to know that, for almost two months now. And it has been going really well in the lunchroom and the cafeteria. So, we have moved kids out of the classroom into the lunchroom, into the gyms. So, we have been trying different things, and our numbers are no different than anybody else's when it comes to kids eating together in the, in the cafeteria.
Chair Holland, Trustee Decker did indicate she has another question as well.
Go ahead, Trustee Decker.
Thanks. I'm curious about what resources we have to be able to make the solutions possible that involve hiring. And by resources, I mean both money and extra people, because I know that staffing has already been an issue.
Yes, it's a, it is a good question, Trustee Decker. We, we, we don't know who might be out there. We do know that there was student teachers that graduated in the fall from the University of Montana, so that might be a possibility in terms of staffing. We, in some situations too, we have staff returning from leave. In other situations, we might be able to use those staff to do some of this work. I would tell you, the resource, the money, monetary resource question is a concern for us, as always, every year, but this, this year more so. I mean, we spent the majority of our governor's CARES Act money, you know, on first semester, we saved some of the CARES Act money that we got last spring for second semester. So, we've got that available. We also have some resources of money in general terms, general fund money that was saved last spring. As you remember, during the shutdown, we did set aside some general fund money that could be used for this, this process. So, it's, it's really difficult without a solid plan to know exactly how many staff we're talking about. But, you know, if we could prioritize, as I said before, if we wanted to prioritize K-1, 2, if we wanted to prioritize Title 1, then that gives us a better picture of, of the number of staff we might need to hire.
Thank you. Rob, just out of curiosity here, looking at these two plans, which is less disruptive to implement? You know, you have a timeframe thing, so which one would be quote unquote, easier to implement?
Yeah, I'm going to rely, if you don't mind, on a few of the principals. I think that's a really good question, and I do want to say that, you know, we do need to do some serious planning in order to implement any of these plans, and I don't know how long that's going to take. The other piece of that is staffing. You know, we'd have to make sure the staff is in place before we implemented. But I think the question you're asking is like, which one would, maybe I misunderstood, which one would be easier to implement? Okay, I would, I would leave that question to the principals if we have any that would want to chime in.
I'm at Lowell, it would be easiest for us to implement bringing K-2 back. It require, we have staff returning from leave, and it wouldn't require us to make any changes to our schedule, to busing, to anything. So, for us, the easiest change would be to bring our K-2 kiddos back four days a week.
This is Lindsay from Franklin. It would definitely be easier for me to do K-2 because it would not change much, and I wouldn't have to move around staffing in times.
That's the same at Hawthorne. It would be easier with K-2, and the schedule would not change significantly.
I think also from a Title 1 school, I think one of the things that's been most challenging this year is trying to do both in-person and remote learning. And where you to bring back all students at any given school or any given age range, that takes that equation, part out of the equation, which I think simplifies the solution significantly.
And this is Pam Wright from Rattlesnake. And you guys, you just heard from the title schools, but from a larger school, and Chris can weigh in too, it's probably easier to bring back special populations than K-2 because of the staffing requirement.
This is Chris Stevens again at Jeanette Rankin. And I know that it would be difficult as far as our numbers for us to come back at K-2. But like I said before, if I bring back all those special populations, I'm really talking about 16 kids versus 18 kids in a classroom. So, at what point do we not think about what's best for all kids? And at K-2, I think about all of those kids, four days coming to school a week is more significant and more important for all of those kids and for my staff, because they have that consistency piece of seeing those kids every day. So, obviously, we're going to have to work within the confines of our building. But I feel like the K-2 option is best for everybody, because we know that we're getting those kids every day. When we have those, the special kids that we're bringing back, we also are still in the hybrid model. So, I just want everybody to think about, as a teacher, you have a hybrid model, but then you have some kids who are coming back four days a week, and what do we do with those kids? And there's just a lot that we're asking for our staff when we're doing those kinds of changes, so.
This is Julie again at Paxton. Our highest numbers of at-risk and the numbers that didn't quite make it, who are in the intervention category, our highest numbers are at first grade. And we actually have low enough class sizes at first grade, and also kindergarten as well, that we could bring back kindergarten in first grade and stay under 15 kids in a class. Second grade would be a challenge for us, but I would be definitely more in favor of bringing kids back four days a week if we could just have some slight alterations in our staffing.
I did, excuse me, I didn't know if anyone else wanted to provide any comments in response to Trustee Oldperson's question?
Trustee Decker does have her hand raised as well.
Okay, Trustee Decker, go ahead.
Thanks. I'm curious about if, and this is all very hypothetical, but if, if we need to be putting any thought to the question of if kids are coming back, if we do go down the road of kids coming back four days, does it become difficult then to justify not being there five? If we're coming back with whole groups, why are we having short days? Like, each of the interventions that we are doing to try to reduce contacts and reduce spread, it's a, to have the, the whole group and the larger group present makes, makes room to question some of those other pieces. And so, I think it's important to just, when you talk about that we're using lots of different strategies, kind of the Swiss cheese model approach, where you have the holes in all different places, we need to just be really transparent about why all the kids being there sometimes is even being considered, if we're not also then taking those other steps. It's kind of a comment, but it's kind of a question, I guess, as far as what are those things that make it so that we would consider this step and not others?
Dr. Watson, were there parameters, was there assumptions based on four days versus five days?
Yes, I, I think probably the biggest one I can tell you is it's a, it's a baby step. Obviously, we haven't taken this step yet. And what, what I'd like to, what I'd like to see is, you know, planning and process around this to even, to even see if we can do this. And it is, it is a baby step. One of the things I would say about Mondays, and that's, that's a legitimate question about, you know, what happens on Mondays if teachers are not planning for remote learning anymore? One of the huge things that we've seen a benefit, I'll give you two benefits of Monday. Number one, it's really allowed teachers more time to talk to each other and plan together, which we have never done enough of in, in all of our years. So, that, that's been a huge unintended benefit, is having that time for teachers to plan. Number two, we still have quite a few kids that are out on quarantine, and that's a different list. I'd be happy to show you the numbers on that, but for the last several weeks, we've averaged between 100 and 200, or I think the highest was 250 kids that were out on quarantine. And those are not necessarily positive cases, but for every kid that you have out on quarantine, that requires a lot of prep work for you to make sure that they can still do the remote learning while they're out on quarantine. And that, that just takes a lot of extra time on, on a teacher's behalf. So, as long as we have those numbers of kids out on quarantine, I think we just need to acknowledge that that takes a lot of extra teacher time to plan for that. And then, I had a third one that was probably even more important about Mondays. I can't remember, but somebody will bring it up in public comment, I know. We had another really good reason to think about Mondays. As far as the, the actual school day schedule, I understand that we're on a shortened school day, and that's definitely caused some frustration among our, among our community. But remember that we're on a shortened school day because we're trying to minimize the number of kids on the buses. And the only way to do that is really to stagger those bus schedules, and that's part of the reason. So, again, it's a mitigation strategies. If you look at that, those 17 mitigation strategies, this is one that's, that's critically important to, to make sure that we're doing the, the bus thing. The last thing, and I remembered what I was going to talk about before. By happenstance, we chose Mondays rather than Wednesdays as the remote day. A lot of school districts across the country that did hybrid model are using Wednesdays. By happenstance, we chose Mondays because we had a lot of Mondays off at the start of the year, and so it made sense. Once we got started in Mondays, we just didn't move away from them because our, our families had already got that set, and they got, you know, childcare issues set for Mondays. So, we've just always stuck with Mondays. And unintended consequence, and I'm really glad we've stuck with Mondays now, is we end up doing a lot of contact tracing on Mondays from stuff that happens over the weekend and cases that we find out about late Friday afternoon. We do a ton of contact tracing on Monday, and it really helps limit those people from being in school if we have that one day to do that catch-up contact tracing. And I've heard that at every single level, middle school, high school, and elementary, that Mondays are really beneficial for that catch-up for contact tracing.
I think Trustee Lorenzer had her hand up, and then Trustee Mercer has his hand up too. So, go ahead, Trustee Lorenzer.
Well, my question, and Grace kind of led into it, is about the mitigation strategies. And there are 17 of them, and one of them is social distancing. And now, we've been at this for so long, are we sure that's a key strategy anymore? And because what I'm sort of hearing, like airplanes are flying, and ventilation seems to be a very key strategy. So, have we, has there been any information about whether this, this small of class sizes is really necessary? It's my one question. The other is, have we upped our level of ventilation in our schools? And, and I guess in the buses?
I don't know about the buses. I don't know if Pat does either. But the ventilation, Pat's saying no, we don't know about the buses. The ventilation in our schools, remember during the bond process, we did improve ventilation in a number of our schools. In addition to that, we also invested in our, in all of our ventilation systems this fall. And I wish Burley was here because he could describe what exactly we did to each system. But we added on a component to each of our systems in all of our schools to help with reducing transmission of, of, of a lot of viruses. And I can't remember the name of it, it's got a fancy engineering name that I'm not going to remember. But our, I, I do believe we've done a lot to improve our ventilation this fall. And Pat, do you remember anything about that?
It was an ionization system that was added to all the ventilation or HVAC systems. It had the, the effect of reducing the transmission of certain particulate through a, through, through some process that all of the fresh air went through. So, not very scientific, but it, it was upgraded in all the HVAC systems.
And then, as far as the, I, I would encourage all of the board members, if you get a chance to go read this, this link about the CDC mitigation strategies. Those really haven't changed a whole lot since, since we started all of this. These were all things that were recommended by the CDC from the start. The first five, they recommend the first five as the key mitigation strategies, and those are the ones you often hear about the most. But quite honestly, many of these other ones are also really, really important, and we used all of these when we were trying to plan for the start of the school year. We used, we used all of these mitigation strategies and asked ourselves, which ones are we, which ones can we do, which ones can we not do? And you'll see a lot of these on here. So, you know, we made, we, number 12, we made rules about visitors in school. That's completely because it was a recommended mitigation strategy to, to do so. The social distancing one is critically important. I'm just going to say that anytime people talk about this, that's a key mitigation strategy that, that folks talk about. Obviously, with, as kids get younger, it's harder and harder to do the social distancing. As you increase numbers of kids in classroom, it will also be difficult to do social distancing. What we have seen from other schools is podding of students, so trying to keep students in pods of four rather than 16 helps. And then, the other thing I think that we need to figure out is the, is the times during the day when they, when they're not wearing a mask. And that doesn't happen very often, but if, if lunchtime is a time when they're not wearing a mask, then are there other things we can do at the school level to mitigate that strategy? Because obviously, if they're not wearing a mask, that eliminates number one. If we don't have enough room for social distancing, that eliminates number two. So, then we start asking ourselves, are there other things we can do? Because those strategies are not being able to be implemented effectively during certain times of the day.
I guess I too want to follow on what Trustee Decker said. What I take from it is, what is your standard? I mean, if, we talked before about what's the maximum number of kids that can have in this classroom safely? If that's 20, then why aren't we open five days a week? Because these are all under 20. So, we need to know what that, if the number is 15, then we go up to 15. If it's 10, we go up to 10. But I think that number of what we can safely put in a classroom has to, and then we should max out that is, whatever that is, once we know that. And so, otherwise, yeah, I look at this and I say, well, if you can put 16 in, then why aren't all the classes five days a week? Because that's how many are at this school? So, what is that number? What's the restriction that would make it? Because I think a lot of the four days a week and talking about staffing, I think implicit in some of what some of the principals were saying is that they're trying to do some things to keep things smaller or something. Because otherwise, again, a little bit what Trustee Decker said early, at the beginning of the year, we had staffing to staff the school five days a week. So, there's something else going on that needs to be made really explicit, that's a limiting factor on these going forward. Otherwise, what, we should just be open. The question is, is that, do you have, I mean, is that, am I, am I crazy? Is there a limiting factor that's sort of implicit in under this that's stopping just going to full? And can that be made explicit in a way that we can then evaluate plans against?
Yes, that's what, that's I think what, where we're at. We're at a point now where we need to make that number explicit. I do think it has a lot to do with the size of the room and the type of furniture that's in the room. Most of our classrooms are 900 square feet. 15 seems to be the number that makes sense for a lot of reasons, when you consider that in a high school, you could have up to 30 kids per class. And so, if you do a hybrid schedule, you're talking 15 kids per day, essentially. So, 15 seems to be that magic number. But again, there, there's no, I haven't found any research around that. I haven't found anything that said you should strive for 15. There's nothing out there, and I've looked. I think what you have to ask yourself is the size of the room, how many kids are going to be there, but also how, how can we keep them safe while they're there? 15 seems to be the number that, and that's the number I told the principals to really target, is that 15 number?
Trustee Evguers?
Thank you. Just two, two questions. One, all of this, I, I'm pretty strong that social distancing is an important one for us, as, if we're going to be in hybrid plus in any way. But with that said, I should know this, but I don't, and please educate me, talk about the physical barriers in our classes, because if you have good physical barriers, that can be kind of, you know, if there's, if there's plexiglass around a kid, the, the social distancing probably isn't as important. Of course, keeping up their desks might be a challenge. So, that's my first question. And then, the second one is, is the, going back to your old stomping grounds, Rob, Bozeman's been K-2, I think, four or five days a week for a little while. been K-2, I think, four or five days a week for a little while. Do we know effects that's had on their cases or anything like that? Or has it even been long enough to tell how it's been for them?
Yeah, so regarding the physical barriers, obviously, a couple of things. We didn't have the money nor the resources to invest in plexiglass around each desk. And then what I would tell you, at K-1, 2, that would be very difficult to keep students, you know, in that area. There's a great video on our website that kind of shows you what is happening in the classrooms. I encourage you to take a look at that, because as you can, you'll see at K-1, 2, there's, you know, there's movement, there's being at the carpet, there's being at other stations in the room. So even having a plexiglass piece in front of every desk is not going to be the solution. We did invest, and we can continue to invest, in some plastic dividers for our classrooms. They're not installed. They're sort of flexible plastic dividers that a student could stand up on their desk during a time when they're doing, you know, reading or doing work on their own, or during a time when they might have their mask down because they're eating. And I know those are being used in a lot of our classrooms. But again, we didn't want to order those if they didn't get used, and we have a lot of people using them, but they're not perfect. And it's not necessarily the physical barrier that's described here, but it is a barrier. The last thing about Bozeman, they actually went K-5, and they went K-5 around Thanksgiving time. And it was all K-5 kids, five days a week, I believe. And I don't know what impact that's had on their case numbers.
Trustee Sturbis has a question as well. Go ahead, trustee Sturbis.
I was wondering, with the contact tracing, have we been able to get any data on what kind of transmission is happening in the schools? Like, is it staff to staff, student to student, between staff and student? Have we been able to do that at all?
That's a great question. And absent of having an epidemiologist on staff, I think that might be difficult for us to figure that out exactly. What we're doing in our case investigation is determining if it was contracted outside of school. We know that for sure. Generally, what we hear is, you know, I got it at work, or like for our high school students that are working somewhere, or I got it from a family member. That's pretty easy for us to say that one. The one that we're struggling with is when we have unknown transmission, and we keep track of that every single week. And a few weeks ago, it was much higher. We had, you know, in the neighborhood of 30, 35% of unknown transmission. It's gotten a lot better in the last few weeks. It's under 30%. But the unknown transmission has been really hard for us to determine exactly where they got it. I don't want to make an assumption that it's not happening in school, because I think that would be an assumption that I'm not qualified to make. It's outside of my wheelhouse, definitely, as an educator. But we, when we know for sure that it did happen in school, we have noted that as well. So if you look at our data, we have three separate columns. One is, yes, we know for sure it happened at school. Number two is, it happened outside of school. Or number three is, it's been unknown transmission. We don't know where it happened. And generally, the lowest number is the one that, where we know for sure it happened in school. But again, the unknown transmission has been a difficult one for us to figure out.
So how do you know that it's happened in school?
So generally, what happens is, we hear about a positive case, we identify the close contacts, and then a few days later, one of those close contacts comes up positive. Then we know it likely happened in school, because when we do the investigation on that close contact, they don't have any other place where they might have got it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Dr. Watson? Hatton, my phone, I'm sorry, my phone died, so I can't keep track of anything.
I don't, I don't see any trustees indicating questions.
Thanks. And so since, it's kind of an interesting suggestion. I believe what Dr. Watson would like is for one of the K-12 trustees to make a motion that identifies what you'd like the district to do as to the populations we talked about, the special populations and the K-3, K-2 populations, K-1 and 2, 3 grade levels. And so it's up to the trustees to identify a motion they'd like to make to give direction to the district in terms of where we want to go. And then there'd be board discussion and public comment.
Trustee Decker has raised her hand as well.
Okay, so trustee, trustee Decker, go ahead. Trustee Avgeras also had his hand up, but go ahead, trustee Decker.
Well, I would like to make a motion that we direct the administration to continue to develop school-by-school plans for K-2 and/or special populations to return to the buildings within the framework for safe return that is developed by the coronavirus committee.
Sorry, I think I've written it down so that I can repeat it. The motion that was made, and then I'll ask for a second, is a motion to direct the administration to continue to look into and possibly adopt a school-by-school plan for the K-2 population and the special, I'm trying to make sure if I use special population as were identified in the handout that we received. And was there something else at the end, trustee Decker?
Yeah, that I'd like to say that that plan be linked to the framework for safe phasing and reopening that is continuing to be developed by the coronavirus task force.
Okay. And trustee Lorenzen has her hand up. I don't know if she has a question or a second.
I'd like to propose an amendment to that motion to define it only as K-2, so that there really is some direction from the board. I would like to restrict the motion to say the board is recommending K-2.
And not the special populations?
Not the special populations separate from K-2, no. I don't know how trustee Decker feels about that.
Well, I guess by saying explicitly in the motion, "school by school," I think that that sort of placed that determination on the capacity of the school. I couldn't absorb all the information quickly enough to say with certainty that every elementary school was feeling strongly enough or had done enough research to make that determination yet.
And so I'm thinking that trustee Decker would like to move forward with her motion at this point, and so we can get a second and have a discussion. And if the motion, you know, if the motion needs to change or be modified, that can come out through the discussion. Trustee Hobbins, is that a second?
Yeah, I second trustee Decker's motion.
Okay. And so we now have a seconded motion, so now we have time for board discussion. Sorry, trustee Lorenzen.
Well, I'm concerned about the motion having both a school-by-school approach and not specific to K-2, because I don't want to see some K-1st and 2nd graders in Missoula going back to school full-time and others not. That, that's my concern and why I want to keep the focus on the same group.
And I just wanted to clarify, and maybe trustee Decker can clarify. I thought your motion was to identify K-2 and the special populations.
And/or.
And/or. So it was identifying K-2 as well. Is that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can I reply or make a comment?
If you want to modify your motion, or, oh, yeah, you can make a comment, sorry. Or at that stage, thank you.
Yeah. So by including that this is a school-by-school decision, trustee Lorenzen, I think we're in that situation already. We may be in a situation where some schools are ready and able to have K-1, 2 students come back, and some schools aren't. By having this be a school-by-school process, that is already kind of the direction that we're going and a possibility, and I think one we need to be really careful about.
Trustee Mercer?
I have two comments. One, maybe just my confusion, but are we a little ahead? It sounded like the motion was to direct that it open if possible, or are we directing that they bring us a concrete proposal? Are we still just doing, so we asked the administration to come up with a feasibility study, that's this, and is the next step to ask them to come forward with a proposal to actually, that we would then vote to implement? Or is this motion to direct them to do some version of this based on this vote? And then my other comment is on the school-by-school. This school that has 49% of their population at risk is not going to be able to do the things that the one that has 9% is going to be able to do, right? And so if we don't say, so are we saying, so it's okay that you do the best you can with your 50%? Don't we, don't we own that district-wide that they may need a little bit extra and that they should get more assistance if 49% of their kids are in need? I also, on the equity thing, somehow K-2 seems more equitable and more defensible. And I also note that on those studies or the data, the MOU kid, MOA kids were considerably more at grade level. And so if we're prioritizing resources based on special need, I kind of think they should be in the factor too, and pulling resources from there.
And just to clarify, so that I understand the process, it is a little nonspecific in terms of the motion at this time, because as you'll recall, by, at the next board meeting in early January, that's when we, the board has to make a decision about what we do in the second semester. So I think this is giving direction to the administration so that at the next board meeting, we are going to have to make some decisions that are much more concrete. But this is giving some direction. Does that help?
Well, I can make a suggestion. Can I make a comment?
Sure, and then trustee Mercer wanted to make a comment too.
Okay. So it was my understanding that the coronavirus task force was still developing out a framework for triggers for moving between phases. And I would imagine that this bringing back of students in a greater capacity would be closely tied to that phasing. So I'm really uncomfortable with a motion right now that would kind of leapfrog that phasing process and framework that a lot of work has been going into. So I'm, that's why my motion is, in fact, a little bit general, to say, please continue to explore bringing back students and have that tied to the phasing plan that the coronavirus task force is creating.
And trustee Mercer, did you have another comment?
Yeah, again, I'm a little bit on the, then what direction are we giving? I mean, of course, they're working on getting back, I mean, so, and then I guess my question was, and so did we did tell them to do both things separately? Bring us a plan about K-2 and bring us a plan about special populations? And then we'll add those into the big vote in January when we decide if we're coming back or if this plan's going forward? I mean, is that what's being envisioned? And this, if we're just moving to tell them to keep working, then, you know, absolutely thumbs up. But I guess I'm not, I'm just not clear what we're saying. That's my.
Trustee Avgeras?
Yeah, I understand the confusion there, and my comment to that is just a generality here, is I think what we're instructing the administration to do is this is a high-level 50,000-foot view of what each school could do. And this is mostly, for the most part, principals saying, I know my school, I can probably do this, but I haven't talked to my teachers yet. What trustee Decker's motion is, and don't let me put words in your mouth, Grace, but I think it's that this is great at 50,000 feet, get down to 5,000 feet and tell us, okay, you think you can do this, how exactly would that look like? And bring it back to us and say, this is what I can do. This is what they think they can do, they gave us today. What we're asking is, what can you do? And that's kind of the next step. So there's no concrete plans. I'm uncomfortable with part of our schools K-2 going back and part, probably not, or maybe not. But that's something we can reject as a board when that comes back to us in the middle of January. That's something that we can say, no, you know, it's going to be, it's all or not. So if we can't get all back, then we won't do any. Or if we can get eight schools but not a ninth, then how can we get the ninth back in? So I think that's what we're saying is, what this motion is, is bring us back a plan that you vetted harder, you've dug deeper on, and you can do, and you're confident you can do, and then let us decide if that's the plan we want to go with or not.
Any other trustee comments? And, oh, trustee Lorenzen, sorry.
Well, I think what trustee Avgeras is describing are parameters, and I think the administration has asked us for some parameters. I think to say, to be too general doesn't really accomplish much, and we are, you know, time is of the essence. I think it's an important parameter that was brought up there, is the board saying, we want all the schools to make the same decision. We want the same plan in all the case, the schools. That would be a parameter. And so the motion is, you know, is to kind of keep looking at it, but I don't feel like it provides a parameter of any kind.
Trustee Decker is also raising her hand.
Trustee Decker?
So the motion said, "school by school." So that would be a parameter. That would be different than every school has to do this the same way. And the motion also includes the parameter of following the phasing that the, is set up by the task force. And what I'm wanting to avoid here is the situation where we direct the district to bring back a set of kids in a way that's outside of all of that coronavirus data that is informing the decisions about how our district is phasing in general. In our, in our sort of excitement and eagerness, like I think everybody probably felt like lifts of optimism at how positive people were discussing the concept of having kids back in schools, because that is truly what we all want to see. We all also know that there are real reasons why that hasn't been the way that things have happened this fall. And in many ways, nothing has changed, because we've now asked the question and we've engaged with it in a more concrete way. So that's why my motion is to support this school-by-school process that the district is suggesting, and to, and to also be tied to the phasing that's using coronavirus data to determine whether it's okay to open this door. But if, you know, when we move to a vote on this motion, I'm, you know, we'll see. But that's where I'm coming from with this.
Thanks. Any other board discussion? Hatton? Oh, trustee Mercer?
And so just maybe for public comment preemption purposes, the motion is not to do anything in terms of, or to direct, nothing would happen without further motion and approval of the board. Whatever's being done is just a direction of further examination and make a more concrete plan. Right? So this is not a vote to do, to open anything. It's just, please give us a further plan.
And just to clarify, that's correct, because we know the decision about what's going to happen for second semester is going to be coming up, you know, after the winter break, so. Trustee Avgeras?
The only thing that I would, amendment that I'd ask trustee Decker is, when she, the last part, or is based on the levels changing based from our committee, would be based on the board's adoption of those levels, so that we're not saying that those, okay, she's good with that, okay.
So we're going to modify the motion that includes the language that trustee Avgeras just said. Tracy, are you able to capture this now?
I've got it.
Okay, thanks. So that amendment was accepted by trustee Decker. So with that, is there any other board discussion?
No, there is not.
Okay, so now we will take public comment. And as I indicated at the beginning of the meeting, if you could state your name, and if you have an usual spelling, spell it. And also try to limit your comments to three minutes. And I believe the process is, as you raise your virtual hand, then you go into a queue. Essentially, Zoom lines you up in terms of who had their hands up first, and then, because my- And then, because my phone died, Hatton will be identifying those folks who want to make public comment, and I'll try to help do that through a loaned computer, so. So it looks like someone identified as Emma H. has her hand up. So Emma H., if you can unmute and state your full name and go ahead and make any public comment you'd like to make.
Thank you. My name is Emma Hunter. I'm a registered nurse, working in public health and early childhood development, and also the mother of three elementary school-age kids attending our hybrid model. I've been listening in on a handful of our school board meetings and MCPS COVID committee meetings this year. And I want to really thank the principals who presented to the MCPS COVID committee on Monday and who spoke here tonight as well, um, for bringing their feasibility plans for getting kids in school more. I also want to thank Jeff, the trustee, who requested that we move forward with that. This week felt like the first discussion I listened to that really focused on acknowledging the harm to kids caused by our current circumstances and how we as schools and a district can mitigate that harm. I do want to note that when the principals presented their plans on Monday, it sounded to me like they were advocating for bringing K five back, that they thought that's what would work best. So I'm not sure why we wouldn't want them to guide this process a bit more. Um, the board really hasn't directly asked them to. There's been so much discussion of and planning around harm mitigation with regard to COVID transmission, with surprisingly little reference to the impressive success our schools have had. For clarification, we have zero examples in our schools of when a person appears to have infected another person, student, teacher, or other staff while at school. Our schools mitigation efforts work. And as a side note, the World Health Organization says that one meter is sufficient for distancing in schools, three feet, not six. Another thing to note is that our hybrid model, which requires families to use alternative childcare three out of five days, data shows may actually increase risk to teachers and students, because each child's exposure has been multiplied. The same applies to high school students, just not in the form of childcare. We knew before COVID started from research on flu outbreaks, that high school students have more social exposure to one another when they're not in class for a day, not less. They're bringing all that social exposure back to the classroom with them. Having five, having students there five days would be safer. So I would, I would love to hear more discussion of and planning around how we can mitigate harm to kids. We know that remote learning is far less effective. We know the risk for abuse and neglect increases when they're at school less. We know that kids are missing out on important social emotional development and are struggling with mental health, as are their parents. Our older students are missing out on the effective instruction that would enable them to succeed in college or jobs after high school. Worldwide and nationwide data shows that full classrooms don't increase COVID spread, they are safe. Almost every other community in Montana successfully resumed full-time learning. I've seen in the news recently that for many of those communities, this has allowed their school boards to move away from focusing on things there's already guidance on, such as how many kids can be in a room, to discussing how much they can provide to their teachers in hazard pay or a bonus. It'll be $1,000 in one district. I ask that you please continue to move into the direction of mitigating harm for our kids by inviting them to school, the safest place, and start talking about how we can provide monetary bonuses to our educators and other school staff. Um, and as a final note, I think that New York City has taught us that having triggers that immediately affect how we educate isn't a great idea. So I hope the task force is aware of the issues that have come up with that. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. And it appears that the next in the queue is Katrina. So Katrina, if you can unmute and state your full name and provide public comments, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Katrina O'Neil Weckenbrock, and I'll offer that last name because I know it's tricky. I am a licensed clinical social worker and family therapist who has worked with children and families for more than 20 years. I have worked in child welfare, I have worked in schools, and I have worked as an outpatient and in residential treatment. I am also the parent of a third grader and a kindergartner in Missoula County Schools. There are so many factors that went into my being able to be here tonight for these long two hours. And I want to acknowledge my privilege that allows me to be able to be a part of this, and that I feel compelled to speak tonight, because so many of my clients and friends and people in our community do not have that opportunity. When Missoula County Schools first began looking at transitioning back to in-person school, you as the Board of Trustees and you, Dr. Watson, as the superintendent, pledged to follow the science. At this point, what we think scientifically true is that while schools do reflect the prevalence of community spread of COVID-19, they do not act as super-spreaders or in any way accelerate the spread of COVID-19. At this point, it is clear that MCPS has taken the appropriate precautions to ensure that children are safer in their in-person learning. I have been so incredibly impressed with the dedication of the teachers and the administrative staff to ensure the safety of our children's learning environment. I have also been impressed with our children's willingness to adapt to these precautions so that they can stay in school, which is where they very much want to be. And I also want to recognize the work of the incredibly adept and persistent staff of community partner programs such as Parks and Rec, the YMCA, and countless others, who have come together to provide care for our children on remote days and after school. Both professionally and personally, I am reminded daily how hard this pandemic has been on children and families. It is beyond clear at this point that working parents in particular are at a breaking point. It is also clear that schools function as more than just centers of academic learning. Schools are places where students feel safe, where they get meals, peer socialization, music and movement, and where they get attentive adult care. School is the only place where some children get these things. We also know how detrimental keeping kids out of school is not just for their learning, but for many of the other parts of what it means to have a meaningful life as a child. We also know, as Emma said previously, that due to the needs of childcare, children are mixing at a higher prevalence in outside alternative care arrangements than they would be if they were just in school five days a week. I urge you, as the Board of Trustees, to revisit the science and acknowledge that the hybrid learning model is not keeping the children of Missoula any safer, and is in fact, likely increasing the risk of exposure to COVID for many families. It is also creating long-term social and economic devastation for many of the families in our community. For those families who retain concerns about in-person learning and have the option for alternatives, there are many, including the online academy or private instruction through pods, tutors, or private schools, who have been operating five days a week since the beginning of the school year. However, for many, many families who have been struggling to get through this time, every day has become a battle between balancing economics and child welfare. I strongly believe that it is time to take a harder look at how schools can provide relief for families in our community while maintaining the rigorous standards of safety needed to keep our community safe from COVID-19. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thanks. And Casey Ballou is the next, um, person in the queue. And just a reminder, if everyone can keep your comments to about three minutes, that will allow for everyone to participate. So go ahead, Ms. Ballou.
Hi, Casey Ballou, K-A capital C, two small e's, B-A-L-L-O-U. I'm the president of the Missoula Education Association, representing your certified staff here in Missoula County Public Schools. Um, I think we just heard some important points from our two previous speakers. Um, we've done a lot to make sure that mitigation strategies are in place and that students and staff and families are safe. And safety has to take that, that top spot in any consideration that we make. So I appreciate your conversation tonight and the emphasis on that. The COVID task force has been looking at some of those triggers, and we know, based on those meetings and looking at those two top factors on that chart, that really the indicators would say that, that perhaps we should not be in school at all. But we have not pushed for that as a union. Our teachers are not pushing to go full remote. We know that that's not in the best interest of our students and staff if we can keep things safe. So making sure that we take a look at that, that data and keep safety at the foremost of our decisions is absolutely in everyone's best interest. Everyone would love to see students back in school. That's where we're strongest as teachers, that's where we see the most growth in students, but we are having success in hybrid, and we're eager to show you that in the coming days and weeks. You know, we know we're going into some testing phases, but we've seen gains academically. We've seen kids that, you know, are building problem-solving strategies and teachers who are willing to solve problems. Um, one of the key things that we need to keep in mind is that teachers are being affected by illness, and that making sure that we keep them safe prevents us from having the, quote, rolling blackouts, um, the other double A districts are talking about when they talk about school programs shutting down because they are all there full-time. So I think we're doing the right thing. I think continuing to make sure that we have those mitigation strategies, as many of the 17 in place as possible, like Trustee Decker said, helps that Swiss cheese approach and keeps us absolutely safe. We want to make sure that we safeguard students, staff, and families in our community so that we can keep kids learning as long as possible and keep our model sustainable. Thanks for your voting yes on this and for your conversations.
Thank you. And it looks like Tom McClintock is the next person in the queue. Mr. McClintock, if you want to unmute and go ahead and make your public comment?
Hi, yes, thank you, and good evening, everyone. I just wanted to speak up, um, to echo a lot of what Ms. Ballou said, um, and really applaud, uh, Trustee Decker for what I feel is a, a really, uh, smart, uh, motion. I think that, um, you know, that there is a lot of data that schools are the safest place for kids in a lot of situations, but we don't necessarily know that for sure with the pandemic, which is a whole lot of new for a whole lot of people. So I think that the way that this district has been moving, um, slowly, carefully, um, very considered steps, um, has produced a lot more success than in a lot of, uh, similar districts. You know, uh, at the U of M, um, one thing that they did was, um, you know, they established their COVID task force in like April, um, and they mapped out every single, uh, classroom in computer aided design, um, with six-foot radius and specific furniture arrangements. And I know that that's not feasible for, um, MCPS, but, you know, that's the kind of steps you need to take if you want to keep students safe, teachers safe, and if you want to bring them back. I mean, we don't, no one wants kids to stay at home any more than absolutely necessary, because they do learn best when they're in school, but they also learn best from teachers who aren't afraid of bringing this home to elderly parents. And they learn best when they're not afraid that they're going to catch it and bring it home to their grandparent. So really, I applaud, um, these data-driven conversations, slow, considered steps, um, moving forward. Uh, so thank you very much, and I encourage a vote and affirmation of this motion.
Thank you. And I don't think I see any hands up. Is there a hand up?
No, sorry, you're correct.
Okay. One just went back up again. It was down and then it went back up. Marissa McClintock?
Hi. I wanted you to consider what was, what it was going to look like for these students to be in school if we bring special populations back. Um, I wanted to, well, I can't ask, but at least to just the fact that a lot of these kids are, oops, a lot of these kids are going to be seeing repeated lessons? Is that really meaningful learning time at that point? Or are we just putting kids and their staff at risk for butt-in-chair time, essentially? That's what I worry about. So I would potentially support a motion to bring back K two if we could do it safely, but I worry about those littles. I worry about their teachers. And I worry about meaningful education time versus just bringing kids back to bring them back. I'm not willing to double my class size and put my, my students and my staff at risk for just having kids there an extra day when they're getting the same lesson that they got two days ago. Um, I worry that that's going to cause behavior problems, and I worry that it's going to be just one more thing that teachers are going to have to differentiate during this difficult time. We're already being asked to do so much, and for the most part, we're willing to do it, but you got to ask at what cost in this particular case. And also, are kids not going to after-school daycare anyway? I just feel like it's making more problems without really creating any solutions. Thank you.
And could you say your first and last name, just so we have it?
Marissa McClintock, M-A-R-I-S-S-A, McClintock, M-C-C-L-I-N-T-O-C-K. Thanks very much.
Thank you so much. We can see it when you're not on screen, but, um, I just want to make sure the, the motion or the minutes capture the people who are speaking. So thank you so much. And I'll check again to see. It looks like there are no other indications of anyone else in the public who wants to make public comment. So we have a seconded motion, and it is a K-12, um, vote. So I'll take all the trustees at K-12 level who are in favor of the motion to raise their hand first or to unmute and say yes or aye on the phone, and then I will ask for those against. And so in the room, it's, I can't tell, okay, Trustee Mercer, Trustee Old Person, Trustee Lorenzen, Trustee Agarres, and Trustee Hobins. And then-
Trustee Decker has raised her hand.
Okay, and I think that's unanimous then as to all K-12 trustees present, so the motion passes? Anything? Oh, um, Trustee McDonald still on?
It does appear that she's on, however, I haven't seen an indication of a vote.
So, um, Trustee McDonald, um, all those opposed, please indicate by saying no. I'm going to s- assume that she has stepped away from her computer, since she's not responding to any requests for a vote. So it's unanimous as to all K-12 trustees, except Trustee McDonald, who, um, has not voted, and it may be because she's absent from her computer. So we'll go ahead then with the new business, which is 9A1, which is fiscal year 22 Montana School Board Association dues revenue estimate. And so Pat, it looks like they're asking for, um, a percentage of an estimated increase in dues, and we would be voting on actually renewing our, um, membership in MTSBA at a different board meeting, but this is just to say whether we would approve, because we would normally, trustees would normally have done this at an annual meeting, but it didn't happen because we couldn't meet in person? Is that correct?
Yes, that's exactly right.
Okay, so if you want to just provide a little bit more information, Dan.
You bet. So, um, as Chair Holland mentioned, the, uh, the request is a vote on the dues increase for the Montana School Boards Association. We're members of the MTSBA, Montana School Boards Association. They provide services to school districts, consulting services, HR, legal services, uh, they provide training, they provide advocacy. They're also the organization, um, under which we obtain our work comp insurance and our unemployment insurance. And so they generate their revenue through dues from all school districts. Included in the, uh, in the packet are two documents, uh, some information from the School Boards Association about the, uh, the ballot, which is now an online ballot for the increase, as well as the calculation of the increase. And, and you'll see for our school district, as a large school district, it's a, it's a, we pay a flat dues. Uh, the increase for us would be $640 per year, uh, and so the total increase would be $639. Um, the total dues we had paid based upon this estimate is $19,322. As Chair Holland mentioned, the calculation of the dues is a matter of looking back at the expenditures from three budgets ago, three, three years ago for school districts. Uh, this is so they can rely upon the, uh, the audits that are completed in calculating the increase in expenditures by districts around the state. And then they use that to calculate here a 3.4% increase. So with that, that's the, the request is that we would authorize the, uh, the chair to sign the ballot, um, in favor of the dues increase as requested.
Any questions for Pat? Any questions not from either Grace or anyone online?
I don't see any online.
Thanks. So then, um, is there a motion to approve the fiscal year 22 MTSBA revenue estimates as outlined in the fiscal year 22 dues revenue estimate memo? as outlined in the fiscal year twenty-two dues revenue estimate memo, which is on page twenty-three, and I think it's some other documents after that. So is there a motion to approve the M T S B A fiscal year twenty-two revenue estimate? Moved by trustee Lorenzen?
No, I'd like to reword the amount, the-
Okay. Okay, and trustee Wake does have her hand up too, just so you know.
Okay, so I actually wanted to make a motion that we do not improve, we do not approve the dues increase, that we direct our, our board, our chair not to do that. That doesn't mean we won't join, but I would like the motion to be that we do not approve the dues increase.
Is there a second? Second, am I trustee Mercer?
Yes, I seconded only to ask, can I, why?
Well, so just, just as a kind of formality, kind of turn to me, and then I'll ask trustee- so we don't have informal conversations over each other. It just kind of helps with the orderliness of the meeting. So if trustee Decker, or trustee Decker, sorry, trustee Lorenzen wants to explain the basis for making the motion, then we can look for, I mean, I guess it is seconded, but if you want to have further information before you choose to second it, then why don't we have trustee Lorenzen explain the thinking behind it?
Okay, I guess, first, I'm, I'm a little concerned about the presumptive nature of this. Honestly, even the way it was presented to us, as if you guys need to approve this. Doesn't mean we don't support School Board Association. However, think about it, what they've done is they've looked at how much money schools were spending to educate children, and since that went up by three percent, they're going to up their budget by three percent. Their budget increase is based on them just getting a percent increase based on what the costs to the districts went up by. And I'd like to, I'd like to sort of stop that level of thinking. It's their job to support us. We have to spend the money on education, but to say they need a bigger budget because our demands for expenditure are higher, it just doesn't, I don't accept that. I think that as an organization, the School Boards Association should always be under pressure to decrease spending and lower their budget, just like schools are. So that's why I don't, I don't want us to just approve their increase. And that's different than saying I don't want to join.
And trustee Mercer, do you want to second that, the motion that's on the table? Okay, so we have a seconded. Okay. Okay, so we have a seconded motion, so is there any board discussion? And it looks like trustee Wake has her hand up.
Hello? Thank you. I'd just like to ask, Pat, do we get a return on our investment with M T S B A? Did you hear my question?
I can, yes, so-
Hello?
Yeah, can you hear me, Anne?
I can hear you now.
All right, yeah, so the, the question is a return on the investment, so that the services that I just briefly referenced are what are provided through the School Boards Association. And we do use the consulting services for no fee. There's attorney services through the School Boards Association, and those are in the form of H R type services as well as legal services. Some services we, we pay for, the, the strategic planning session, that's a separate fee based, but others are not, so we can contact the School Boards Association for, for legal type services, which is, which is free. Their publications are provided through the School Boards Association, which include forms, legal forms, which also include, it's, it's a, well, a variety of resolutions and other forms that are available. The, the, one of the biggest benefits of being a participate, a member of the School Boards Association is, is participation in those insurance programs. With the unemployment insurance, insurance program, our rate is quite a bit lower than the rate we'd get through the state. And we've also, through that program, received a number of rebates, so reductions in, as a result of how well the program is operating. The work comp program has consistently provided us with a credit, and right now, our, our mod rating is not great, but we still have a credit relating back to the, the premium that we apply against, we've applied against our budget a number of times, so. And as well as the advocacy, I think that over the past few legislative sessions, the Montana School Boards Association, through their partner organizations, have done a really good job of advocating for schools. And so the, the, there, there are a number of worthwhile services that are provided through the School Boards Association.
Thanks, and now additional board comment or discussion? Trustee Agueras?
Pat, if trustee Lorenzen's motion passes, we don't decide to do an increase, what, what happens? Are they, are they going to take what we give them, or what's, what's happens there?
So the, their vote is based upon a quorum, so their, their vote is pursuant to their bylaws, and what they'll do is evaluate the numbers in favor versus against. So we would represent a relative number of votes, as would the voting of all of the districts around the state. So they'll tally those votes and, and determine whether that the dues are increased or not increased. The, I should mention that the, the increase comes on a seconded motion from the board of the School Boards Association.
Any board discussion? Trustee Lorenzen, and then trustee Decker.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's important to understand, and we're not saying we don't join, I'm saying we don't vote for the increase. So it says here they're looking for an additional thirty-four thousand dollars, but you know, we know we had money left over last year because we didn't travel. We, there are a lot of money that didn't get spent last year, and I got to think the School Board Association also has that money left over from last year because they didn't, you know, I'm sure their activities were curtailed as well. So I would just like to, to say to them, no, you have, you know, we can't afford this extra money this year. We can, we'll pay the dues that we paid last year, I just don't want to do the increase.
And trustee Decker?
I guess I might have missed my chance to ask a question, but the question that I'm having now that we're having this conversation is kind of how longstanding this method of determining dues has been. It seems like it might be something that's been in place a long time, and if a school district's expenditures were to go down, and of course, that's not something that has impacted M C P S for quite some time because our population has been increasing, but I can imagine for some of our partner rural schools, their populations fluctuate a lot more and may go up and may go down, and so recognizing that their dues may at times go down based on their expenditures going down, that might be part of why it's calculated in this particular way. I also would just second the comment that Pat made, that the advocacy that the M T S B A provides at the legislature is an incredible support to our public schools across the state, and that that support is going to be incredibly important to this coming legislative session. And so I think that really can't be overstated, and in the scheme of things, thirty-four thousand dollars is a lot of money, but it's not, it's not an enormous increase when you consider the size of our budget overall.
Trustee Hobbins?
I don't want to repeat what Grace just said, but I do want to just emphasize that I think that this legislative session is going to be pretty scary for school boards across the state, and I want to be part of a greater group. So I, I understand that you're not saying that we don't join the, the association or the, but we, but I do think it's incredibly important that we have that, that pool behind us when we go into this twenty-twenty-one session.
Any other trustee comments?
I, I just have one as well, echoing what trustee Hobbins said. I think it was me and Grace and trustee Old Person and trustee Wake sat in on the delegate assembly where we met with M T S B A leadership, and there was a discussion about what, what the legislative session is going to look like this year in particular because of the change in leadership, especially at the governor's level. And so they have done, I mean, as an advocacy group for public education, they have, in other years, they've been able to get a lot done. This year, it's going to take a lot more work to get a little done to continue to support public education. So that's just my comment.
Any other board comment? Any public comment? Not seeing any? Okay, so all trustees in favor of the motion to not approve the dues increase ratio, I guess it's a ratio really, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is trustee Agueras, Agueras, I'm sorry, trustee Lorenzen and trustee Vogel, and is anyone online raising their hand?
No.
Okay, all those opposed, please indicate by raising your hand or unmuting yourself and saying no. And that is trustee Mercer, trustee Old Person, trustee Hobbins, trustee Holland, trustee Wake, and-
Decker, Sturbis, and McDonald.
And Decker and McDonald. So the motion, oh, and Sturbis, sorry, I'm just, my phone died, so I'm kind of sharing a computer from afar. So the motion doesn't carry. So then, does anyone else want to make any motion connected to this topic on the agenda? They're asking for the board to make some decision by December eighteenth. Trustee Decker?
I move that we approve this request to, and that we approve the revenue estimate as outlined in the F Y twenty-two dues revenue estimate memo dated November eleventh, as recommended by the administration.
This is trustee Wake, I'll second.
Okay, we have a seconded motion. Is there any board discussion? I think it's-
Trustee Decker has her hand up.
Trustee Decker?
Thanks, I just want to thank trustee Lorenzen for raising the issue and allowing us to have that conversation. Sometimes these kinds of items can feel a little pro forma, and I think it's really important that we have that conversation about what value we really do see as coming from the M T S B A and what some of the rationale might be for this revenue process. I think it's important that we are all open and, and understand why we spend money in the way that we do and that the voters understand that too. So I really appreciate trustee Lorenzen bringing forward the previous motion.
Thank you. Trustee Mercer?
Yeah, I guess I changed, I was sold by the, I will give them every support in the coming year, but I do think they should justify what additional thing they're going to do with the money. So I'm, it's not what they've done, it's why they want more. And, and like us, they should always be showing that they are deeply cautious with the money that's entrusted to them. So that was my initial thought with it, but we, God help us in the coming year or so.
Any other board discussion? Any public comment? I'm not seeing any?
That's correct.
Okay, so all trustees in favor of the motion to, let me get my wording, to approve the fiscal year twenty-two M T S B A revenue estimate, as is outlined in the materials attached to the agenda, please indicate by raising your hand or unmuting and saying yes, or raising your hand in Zoom land. And I see trustee Decker, trustee Sturbis, trustee Wake, and trustee McDonald. In the boardroom is trustee Mercer, trustee Old Person, and trustee Hobbins. All those opposed, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is trustee Lorenzen, trustee Agueras, and trustee Vogel. So the motion carries. Then we move on to nine A two, which is to approve the Beach Transportation twenty-twenty dash twenty-one memorandum of understanding. So Pat, if you want to walk us through why there's some revisions, because right now, school looks very different than we thought it would look like when we set our budget last year.
You bet, thank you, Chair Holland. So Beach Transportation has been providing school district transportation for over seventy-five years, they're a local company. We represent ninety percent of their business, and, and we rely upon them to transport our students safely, and, and they depend upon us to help support their operations. And what this M O U is about is some modifications to the compensation that's paid to Beach Transportation, and the intent from the school district standpoint is to ensure that Beach Transportation is ready to serve our student transportation needs as we open up and as we require more and additional services. I'll say when we looked at the hybrid learning model, what Beach Transportation did was to assist us with the, the changing in their schedule and in their services and route times in support of our hybrid learning model. And what we did is we adjusted from a ninety-four route per day operation to seventy-eight routes, and the seventy-eight routes also include additional time spent to accommodate the, the various pickup and drop off schedule of fifty point five hours. There are sixteen routes that are not operational within those ninety-four that originally and typically operate. In terms of Beach's operation, they're agreeing to what we've proposed here in this M O U is a seventy percent payment for the seventy-eight routes that are idle on Monday, and a seventy percent payment for the sixteen routes that are not currently operating. The rationale for the seventy percent payment is to, to continue to accommodate and service their ongoing expenditures for staff that they keep employed, also to support the capital investment they've made in the equipment that they use for serving our, our buses. And this is a rate that's similar to the rate that we adopted in the spring when we were closed. Here, when we look at the fifty point five additional hours per day that were added to the seventy-eight routes that operate four days a week, those routes or those hourly excess, or those excess hours operate at forty-two dollars per hour, a charge through December that we're looking to allocate to the C R F funds, the coronavirus relief funds, these are the dollars received through the governor's office. We've also included in the M O U, if you look on page twenty-seven, actually page twenty-eight, it lines out the different areas of compensation. We're also covering some additional costs for scheduling that Beach provided at forty, forty-one, forty-one, forty-nine an hour, forty-nine, seventy-eight, four thousand nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars. Their disinfecting and sanitation costs at two dollars and seventy-two cents per operating bus per day. That'll total about twenty-five thousand dollars through December thirtieth. Both those expenditures, we look to cover with the C R F dollars from the governor's office. And then you'll see that the other pieces revolve around the seventy percent payment for the, for those idle routes. If you look onto page twenty-nine, under section C, item two, significantly, we included a provision that, that would call for Beach to, to provide a credit for any routes that we apply towards additional services that might happen for instructional purposes. This could be additional instructional services that take place at the end of the school year, take place over spring break, it, so, so we would have a credit for any dollars that are paid for idle routes. Otherwise, those are the high points related to the M O U, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Does anyone have a question or any questions for Pat? Trustee Agueras?
Pat, is it possible, or enter consideration, maybe Dr. Watson's a better question for you, we have a, a issue with getting food delivered across our school district and to our, our kids and out there. Mondays, if we're going to be paying this money anyways on Mondays to cover this, could we be using that time to actually have buses delivering food like they were last spring or something like that, just to get something out of the money that we're investing there?
I could probably start to answer that and leave it to Dr. Watson to follow through, but what, what, what's more challenging now with, with doing that, and it is possible, I mean, we looked at that, that prospect and that possibility with our food service program, and, and right now, we're offering food in all of our schools, and it's available to pick up at our schools, and we also offer different open sites where people can pick up food at Chief, Cold Springs, at Mount Jumbo, and various- at Chief, Cold Springs, at Mount Jumbo and various places around the community. The delivery piece has been more problematic with buses. And in fact, if we were to look at delivery again, we'd look at our own delivery vehicles to do so. We have food service delivery vehicles and we have our dray delivery vehicles. Part of the issue is that the buses with the seats and the handing off and moving of food is not always easy within a bus when you're trying to maintain some distancing. So, in talking with the, the food service supervisor, if we did initiate some delivery, we would prefer not to use the buses if possible. And it was something that we did when, when we were fully closed, when the schools were closed. And we are seeing more numbers pick up in terms of our food pickup at the school site. So, I think it's certainly an open idea, but it may not be the, the one we would recommend if we went that route.
Sorry, trustee Mercer?
So, it sounded like there were 75 years of history that I have no idea about. But the whole idea of an independent contractor to me is to offload liability. We've talked earlier in the day about our money that we don't have to do things we want to do. They've taken this contract. Now, we're just going to give them 9% more so that their people don't suffer or they don't go into financial problems to pay their people. And I guess I'll agree to all that as long as, I guess, you're willing to say that this isn't corporate welfare and this is a bargain for us. This is a good deal for us, not just for Beach, this company and our community, because I don't feel an obligation to them. So, this is a good deal?
Yes, and I want to address that, too, trustee Mercer, because it's, it's something that you don't see with, with any contractor that we work with. And I think that there's, the real distinction here and is if you look around the communities around the state with different bus contractors, there's a real challenge in getting bus drivers. And there's, there's been different instances where routes didn't happen, where kids weren't picked up around the state. And, and Beach, we've never had that issue with them. And, and they've always come to, to our aid in providing the service. And, and really, when you look at, at the link between the district and the transportation company, lots of school districts operate their own transportation company. This, as compared probably to any other contracted service, this one is, is a real strong link to us performing our, our services for the, for the schools, for our students. I mean, we have to get them to school. And then, when, when we start transitioning to hybrid plus or to a different schedule or phase three, phase two, phase three, they need to be ready to, to roll and to have bus drivers ready to roll. And, and, you know, a lot of these folks aren't, you know, their bus drivers and aides aren't paid a ton. And much like our folks, you know, it's important for them to keep them working and engaged so they're ready to go. So, I think this is important. This wasn't some simple deal. This, this involves, you know, over two different weeks of negotiations, including four straight days of, of this effort. So, I think it ended up in a point where neither one of us were real happy. But it's probably where it needed to end because we, we, we were able to agree, but, but not also be totally happy. But I think it's inappropriate and appropriate to have this MOU in place and, and to, to pay them for the services they've, they've provided to this point.
Any other questions? I just have one, since it's going to run through the end of the first semester. Is this really going, I mean, that's coming up pretty quickly. So, is it, negotiations will continue to go on to determine what it looks like second semester, depending on what it looks like for the district second semester? Is that right?
That's exactly right, Chair Holland. And it was intentional just because we weren't sure what it would look like after the first semester. And so, I think, I think we have some parameters to work with now, but we also want to, you know, leave the door open for what it might look like in terms of the transportation. And they, they understand, understand that. And, and they've always been willing to jump up and, and provide the service. So, we're just hopeful to give them enough opportunity to get their stuff in gear before we start changing how the transportation looks.
Any other questions based on my question? I'm not seeing any hands up. Okay. So, let me just get back. So, the recommendation is that the trustees approve the attached memorandum of understanding with Beach Transportation. Is there such a motion? Moved by trustee Lorenzen. Is there a second? Seconded by trustee Hobbins, just because I saw her before trustee Agaros. So, okay. Any board discussion? Trustee Lorenzen?
I think this is extremely important to Missoula schools that we maintain this relationship with Beach. I, I know when I was in high school, my bus driver was retired highway patrolman. I mean, we were in good hands on those Beach buses. And there are people in this town who will drive for Beach, who would not drive for some other contractor. I've seen, I was in the Helen area when they ditched their equivalent of Beach and went to a national contractor. On paper, it looked like they were saving money. But they were out on street corners every week trying to recruit drivers. And some of the drivers they got weren't acceptable. And I think these bus drivers aren't paid very much, but they're very loyal to our schools and Beach makes that possible. So, this is why I just feel really strongly that we, we need to challenge Beach. And I think Pat has done that, but we need to remain loyal to them, too.
Any other board, trustee Agaros?
Yeah, just real quick. I, you know, as a private sector guy, I just really feel like we should find a way, if we're going to pay this money, to use the service in some way. I don't know what that means, but I encourage us to think about that and just think through whether, you know, obviously, we have decisions to make bringing kids back. So, if maybe there's a Monday, maybe Mondays, kids are going to be back in school. But I just encourage us, instead of just paying 70%, that we, we find a way to use this service somehow.
Trustee Mercer?
And just to echo that slightly, I know that schools like Lowell were always short on playground monitors, lunch monitors. If we could pay 100% to have the bus monitor be there at lunch, that would be a win-win. So, and I, I do, when we had to go out to Mount Jumbo, they were there. There were a few times, but they came and talked to us. They seemed really competent. I guess I just grew up in a place where the county or, you know, the school district ran the buses. So, and I'm a little, it's a weird relationship where we're both 90% of each other's business. And so, I just, I do trust you and I will certainly support this. But I, I think you can give back that it's not just an, there is something for you to push on your side that we're not just signing everything, so.
Any other board discussion? I don't see any hands up. I just want to say I echo what trustee Lorenzen said. Their relationship with Beach since my 11 years on the board, when there were emergency situations, they bent over backwards in order to make sure that we could get the kids to school, all kids to school, including high school kids. So, I really appreciate that. In these times, I like to think that we're, you know, it's kind of symbiotic that we need to help out people because they've helped us out in the past in, you know, in a negotiated way, but yet supporting them for all that they've done for the past, well, my 11 years. So, with that, is there any public comment?
I'm not seeing any.
Okay. So, the motion is to approve the attached MOU with Beach Transportation. All trustees in favor of the motion, please indicate by raising your hand or by saying yes or aye. And I'll just check for hands raised. Trustee Sturbis, trustee Decker, trustee Wake and trustee McDonald have their hands raised and everyone in the boardroom has their hands raised. So, the motion passes unanimously. Then we move on to B1, which is to approve the first reading of Board Policy 1512. It's a conflict of interest, just cleaning up the policy concerning the conflict of interest. I want to say thank you especially to Tracy Long, who discovered that we had this proposed to us a while ago and the board had some questions. So, we sent it back to Board Council to clarify some information for us. And then it just got lost. And so, she actually caught it that we had never brought it back with the clarifications from Board Council. And so, that's why it's first reading, because we tried to have a first reading a while ago. I think it was like six or eight months ago or even longer. So, that's why it's here. And the clarification was, if I've, I'm just going to turn to the page. So, the conflict of interest, the one modification is you can see all this information that's stricken because it's really confusing. It's just how you determine the fourth degree of consanguinity. And so, if you, if it ever comes up, all of this odd grandfather, great grandfather, great great grandfather, that's all in a statute that's already available to the public to go look up. But the recommendation from Board Council was we don't need to have it in our policy since it already is in statute. And so, the rest of the conflict of interest language remains, except for the second and third pages being stricken because there, no one really knows or understands how to read that. You have to have someone like Deborah Silk at the school board, MTSBA, walk you through what all that means. And so, therefore, that, the recommendation is that the conflict of interest policy, as, as recommended, is being modified by Board Council, be approved at the first reading. We'll put it out for public comment. And then it comes back, is it in 14 days? Anyway, we'll see.
I think it's 20, but.
Yeah. We, we always heard on the side of bringing it back in a month, even though by statute, it doesn't have to be a month. So, any questions of me? Anyone want to guess what a great great grandfather's stepchild is? Whether they can work for the school district if you're on the school board? So, seeing no questions. Is there a motion to approve the first reading of Board Policy 1520, conflict of interest, and post it and authorize posting it for public comment as it has been modified? Moved by trustee Agaros. Is there a second? Seconded by trustee Lorenzen. Is there any board discussion? I took wills and trusts at some point and this is still confusing to me. Any public comment? Seeing none, then all trustees in favor of approving the first reading of Board Policy 1512 and authorizing its posting for public comment, please indicate by raising your hand. And the four trustees attending by Zoom all have their hands raised and everyone in the boardroom has their hands raised. So, the motion passes unanimously. And then we come to the personnel report. It's found on page 34. Is there anything of note in that? Dave?
No, it's a normal monthly personnel report.
So, is there a motion to approve the personnel report? Moved by trustee Lorenzen. Is there, and seconded by trustee Old Person. And we don't have any board discussion on individuals in the report, but general discussion from the board or comments? And any public comment? Again, we don't comment on any individuals listed in the report, but just any general public comment? I'm not seeing any. So, all those in favor of approving the personnel report?
There's a hand up online.
Pardon?
There's, there was a hand up.
Okay. Someone has their hand up to vote or a hand up for a question?
Maybe they put it down. I saw that Ms. Ballou had her hand raised, but maybe she changed her mind.
Okay. Did, do you want to make public comment, Ms. Ballou?
I would love to, if that's all right. K C Ballou, once again, K A capital C, two small e's, B A L L O U. I just wanted to give a huge shout out to our nurses, who as a group appear on this personnel report. They have taken a lot on during a pandemic, as is fitting for nurses, one told me. But yeah, they're an awesome group and, and we just want to value them. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Not seeing any, then all those in favor of the motion to approve the personnel report, please indicate by raising your hand. And the four trustees appearing via Zoom have their hands raised and all trustees in the boardroom have their hands raised. So, the motion passes unanimously. And then the final thing is Tracy emailed everyone a copy of the evaluation tool for those newer trustees and then Dr. Watson brought a hard copy. And so, while we were doing Dr. Watson's evaluation this past year for this, the 2019, 2020, or contract year, one of the things we talked about was whether or not we should take a look at this evaluation tool and make some modifications to it or eliminate some parts of it or look for a different and better model in terms of what kind of an evaluation tool we want to use to evaluate our superintendent by. Just a little bit of backstory. The tool that was being used when I first came on the board really didn't, it was not very concrete. And it left, it basically meant each trustee just kind of wrote a letter about what they thought about the trustee without any kind of measurable points of reference. And so, I think it was, I know it was trustee Wake and I who looked. We got some samples from MTSBA. We looked at some samples from other school districts. And we put together, I think, two or three different options. Is that right? Do you remember trustee Wake?
Yes, that's correct.
And so, then the board as a whole looked at all of them and this was the one we chose. But one of the things, just to point out, is in the very back on page, so the first 11 pages are areas of evaluation and the performance indicators, as is explained at the top, are things to think about. But you don't really rate all of them individually, but you do then rate the superintendent's performance, taking into consideration those things. Sometimes they don't apply as much because we're sometimes in multi-year labor contracts with our, you know, negotiating groups. So, there hasn't been any thing to measure about like negotiation because we negotiated a three-year contract. So, sometimes some of the standards, like number 10, is a little hard to evaluate in that current year. So, oftentimes, there's a not applicable, you know, assessment. Then pages 12, 13, 14 and 15, when we adopted the tool, the thought was, during the evaluation process, we would also meet with the superintendent and put together some goals for the upcoming year. And then it never really happened because first Dr. Apostle left, you know, and then Dr. Mark Thing came onboard and he was right in the middle of getting the bond passed. And so, anyway, so we never did use those last four pages. And in fact, we were starting to work on a strategic plan that we were going to develop, you know, and we got through two sessions before everything got shut down. So, I just, for me, I would say just get, at least get rid of those last pages and have that be a separate discussion or model or, and maybe tie it more to a one-year strategic plan for, to give the direction to the superintendent. And then keep working on our five-year strategic plan as soon as we can get back to meeting. And so, I didn't know if anyone wants to fine tune it by looking at, you know, pages one through 10, I think it's 11, and make, see if you want to add some language. Or I didn't know if any single trustee or a group of trustees wants to look and see if there can be some alterations made to it that make it even better or, you know, more workable. Or if anyone wants to volunteer to look around and see if there's a different evaluation tool that people would like to substitute instead. And for the new trustees, what happens is in the evaluations, as the chair, I average out the numeric assessments and type it up on a form. And that's the form that's provided for the personnel record of the superintendent so that, you know, with this tool. So, everyone knows if it was a three, five, it was somewhere between excellent and outstanding. So, everyone knows how it happens. The comment portion, because you can make comments, they're not put in the personnel file. The, the actual assessment isn't a numeric assessment. They're provided to the superintendent so that he or she can then get feedback from the trustees about how things have been going and things that might be improved. But those are comments directed or to be provided to the superintendent for his or her review, but they're not included in the formal evaluation. Does that make sense to everybody? Because some people have been through it and other people haven't. So, does anyone want to, I, two different suggestions. Does Does someone have an interest in looking at it and kind of tweaking it to see if there's, like, different language you might want to submit? Or two, does anyone want to look and see if there's a different evaluation tool out there, you know, since I think we started doing this one the year before Mark Thane became superintendent? So it's been five years since we've been using this tool. So, and if you want to just leave it as is, that's fine, too. But I just wanted to get direction before we actually move into, oh, is that trustee Wake?
That's me.
Okay. Sorry, I just couldn't see it. Go ahead.
That's okay. I think we should look at a different tool maybe. But then that's just my suggestion. I think that this one was served its purpose, but I think we need to progress forward with a tool that's more adequate for us.
Would you be willing to work with a trustee or two on that project and bring something back to us by the end of January?
Sure.
Does anyone else want to help?
Yes, I would do that.
We just need one more person to help. Okay, I can help, Ann. I mean, we, we did it the first time, so we can give it a second shot. So trustee Holland and trustee Wake will try to get something by the end of January, because since you're already under a contract, this would be applicable to the next fiscal year, because we need to make sure the superintendent had noticed about what he's being evaluated under for this current year. And so that was this tool. But yeah, trustee Wake, thanks for volunteering. Okay. And I think with that, then we move on to public comment on non-agenda items. Any public comment on a non-agenda item?
Can I make a comment?
Sure. I mean.
I know that we voted on the dues, but I think that I need to go back and get more clarification for the board, since the board has some new members. And this board is not the only one that gets confused about how the dues are calculated. So I'd like to, if, with all of your permission, be able to come back with, and give that information to you, either via email or after the first of the year.
It's fine by me. I mean, MTSBA asked us to vote on it by a certain date, so that's why it was at this particular meeting.
No, I understand that. But I think there's enough confusion here that, how it's calculated and everything, that I need to be able to come back and explain it so that everyone understands, has better knowledge of it for the future.
Sure. That, we'll include that as an information item at a future meeting, either maybe in the second meeting in January, because the first meeting in January might be busy. So. And just for trustees, trustee Wake is also the past president of the MTSBA and is on the board, and she's our municipal director. So she's involved in the, the policy setting at MTSBA. So that's why she would have access to getting a clarifying piece of information for all of us. So thank you, trustee Wake, for volunteering to do that. Is there any other public, it looks like there's someone whose initials are A S who wants to make public comment? If you want to unmute yourself and state your first and last name, and try to limit your comments to three minutes.
Hey there, this is Jason Schaefer. This, it, it may not pertain to this part of the meeting, and I apologize about that. I was just a little curious, and, and maybe this pertains more to the end of the meeting. The motion that was passed with regards to K-2 was really muddy to me in what was decided. And if we want to get through this portion of the meeting, and we can maybe clarify at the end of the meeting, because I don't know what all went down, and I listened to the entire thing, but I thought it was muddy from the beginning. And I don't know that it really got clarified throughout. The way that I'm interpreting it right now is that we are saying, upon the January board meeting, we are looking at individual schools to bring all K through two kids back to school. That's how I'm interpreting it. And Grace is shaking her head. So that's where I am super frustrated right now, because we're making things so much more difficult for the public than it needs to be. We need to come out, and we need to be more, I'm not gray. We need to be more black and white on this stuff. And, and that's not helping anybody when we continue to push and push and push and push. Grace, we have to be more black and white. All you guys, I mean, I don't want to call out you, just you, trustee Deckard. It's just, I am, where, where does this stop? Where, where do we say, and I've, and I've, and I've talked and spoken up to trustees and Dr. Watson and said, hey, please stop researching models and find a model that works and moves us forward. Because my fear is the COVID task force continues to just research, but we don't plan. We don't think outside the box. We don't prepare to move forward. So that's, again, I apologize for stepping in on this conversation and this portion of it. But I'm, I, I, I would like some clarification on what was decided with that motion tonight.
And the trustees don't comment on public comment on non-agenda items? So if, I guess...
Well, then I can, I can comment again at some point.
I was going to suggest that you call Dr. Watson so that he can explain to you what he understands the decision the board made tomorrow.
Yeah, he's got my phone number.
Okay. So any other public comment on non-agenda items? I'm not seeing any hands up. So with that, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for being here. And thank you for those who attended via Zoom.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays to everybody.